I'd like to call to order the budget workshop of the North Branford Town Council. It is Thursday, April 10th, 2025. It is 6:31. Please join me in a smooth play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Abelson.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Goad.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Caligia.
Here.
Okay. First item, next item is budget overview for the 2526 budget. We're going to start with, on the town side, we had a bunch of questions from on Tuesday night. So we'll start with whatever answers you have for us in regards to those questions.
Sure, do you want me to just run down what I have or do you want to go through your questions?
No, you can.
I'll go through what I have and if I missed anything.
Yeah.
Sure, maybe back on track here. For mayor and council, there was discussion about the reduction in the clerk line from 28 to 16. And so we have, you have a motion before you that that would certainly be fine and we're good with that.
We don't have any of the motions yet.
Oh, they were.
I know Anthony showed them to me, but he didn't pen them out.
Okay, well, you'll be getting them, so I'm sure he's. He's not here, all right. So let's talk about him while he's not here in the room. When he comes back, I'll make sure all the councilors provide that, but, so that's, that's fine. There was an associated FICA adjustment of $45 that would go with that also. That'll be in the motions that you have before you. Correction on the Plaques pins from $3 to $300, correcting that error. So the motion that we will have for you addresses an addition of $297. Also, the budget books reduction, we have a motion drafted to reduce that by $499. I think that was all the ones on the mayor and council. Town manager side, printing and binding, we're going to have a motion for you to draft, drafted to reduce that line by $562. There are also questions on the pre-employment physicals. I think I could ask Rory to come up and address them.
So I just asked that any department head that is coming up to speak, you either have to sit at the desk and speak into that microphone or stand where Rory is standing. And this is not so that we can hear in this room, it's so that they can hear filming at home. So you need to speak into that. And the other part of that is we cannot have sidebar conversations up here because they, they can hear that at home, not necessarily what you're saying, but it's, it meets out. And then if there's any other type of laughing or whatever, that kind of takes over. So, so I'm directing it to the whole council, please. On that, so.
I'll talk to Anthony.
So we budgeted for approximately 30 pre-employment physicals, background checks, drug screen, physicals. In fiscal year '23, '24, we had 32, and thus far, we have 23 this year. And we're expecting with summer camp and some other things coming up to probably approach that.
Okay. So do they get physicals only when they're offered the position? Is that it?
Correct.
Correct, okay. But this encompasses part timers then for camps and stuff?
And seasonals, yeah.
Seasonal, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. So before you continue, Anthony, can you pass out the motions so we can kind of follow along?
And his order might be different than mine, but.
Thank you.
How are you feeling?
Not too great.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, so the, the two, well, I guess, motion number one is for the reduction in the clerk meetings from 28 to 16. So that would be 12 meetings, but this $1,600 doesn't agree to our budget book because if it's 250 a meeting and you're reducing it by 12, shouldn't that be $3,000? Okay, so, motion one should be $3,000, so that is going to change motion two.
Yep.
Motion three is the reduction in budget books printed. Okay, so what did we go down to? Because this is an odd number, $499 if it's $12.50 a budget book.
So you're on the council one?
Um, yes.
Yes. Yeah, my, the first cut I had done was gone from 28 to 16, came to 50. Yeah, no, you're correct. Doesn't run though. I went to 35 and 25. It was previously 50 and 50.
Right.
So I went down to 35 and 25.
So that's 15 and 25 is 40. Times 1250, so it would come out to 499. That's $500. So the.
So the revised number's going to be 751 on that line, down from 1250. That's where the 499 comes in.
You said you're reducing it by.
I went down from 50 and 50 to 35 and 25.
Right, so that's 15 and 25. You're reducing it and it's the same cost, so 15 plus 25 is 40 books.
Right.
Times 1250 is $500, so it would be over, okay, just wait. It's a reduction of 40. So it's seven, so it's $500 either way.
It must be rounding in Excel, that's why it's 499.
Okay.
You can make it 500.
So the, the FICA would be just the 3,000 times the 0765?
Yep. No, 0145.
What is it?
.0145.
So it's just the Medicare part?
Yeah.
So that should be 40. Well, that, that can't be right because 1,600, it was 47.
Yeah, I think what happened was I looked at the line just for the clerk versus the line for the total for that part-time line. That's where the difference came in.
All right, so three, so that cut should be $3,000 times the 145.
Correct.
So it's $44.
Correct.
All right, so, and motion four is for the other part, the contractual for others, under other contractual, so that's fine. Okay. Okay, so now we have two motions here to reduce the number of budget books printed. So which one are we using, number three or number five?
One is your budget and one's Mike's budget.
So.
Five is the manager's budget, reducing those, and three is, is your budget books getting reduced. And on Mike's, I went from, I just touched the manager budget and went from 120 down to 75. I left the CIP and the annual report numbers alone, just cut the manager's budget from 120 down to 75.
Okay. All right. So now we're up to motion six on here, under town manager, other contractual.
I'm talking with Rory, there's a suggestion to take $1,000 off that other contractual, the hiring expenses.
Okay. Okay. Motion seven is in central services in the telephone.
Right, part of your suggestion was to consolidate the bill, so in doing that, the central service number went up. Kind of leads into another conversation that we've had a couple of times now about creating a new department to put all the utilities into one spot. I mean, if we're looking for, let's say, telephone, for example, we got to check, you know, seven different spots, each department that's got a telephone account. Whereas if we had one department with, you know, a sub-department, being able to still track it to whether it's, you know, central service, police, manager, town hall, whatever it is, there's a way through Munis to do that. And there's also some, you know, trying to get to the next level using the Munis product a little more smartly and smarter. And the, you know, the last three digits, one of the things we're looking at doing, there was a question in the back here about Reynolds Beer's house, I forget what number it was in the motions. And currently, it requires going through, you know, numerous accounts and things like that. Whereas we're proposing to use those last three digits as location codes. So whether it's electricity, whether it's sewer, whatever, whatever the case may be, for, let's say, Atwater Library, that would be building 012. If you sorted and ran a report by building 012, you would see all the costs associated with Atwater. Right now, even library is kind of blended together. So you'd be able to make, let's say, an 011 would be Smith, 011, 012 would be Atwater, and you could break it up and get greater detail and somebody use some of the power of the program to simplify our life when it comes to, you know, things like, what's the, what's the gas account for, for this building? Okay, well, if you went to, say, 001 was Town Hall, you can go to that account and capture all the costs associated with one building and still be able to sort it out multiple different ways. But it does kind of capture the cost in a way that kind of simplifies, you know, things and makes things easier to look up and come back to, you know, answers to. Again, with whether it's the public works, police, whatever else, there's, everything can have a code and you can track it by that last three digits being the location code and give you some greater information as you're making decisions.
Okay. So, so we're taking, we're adding $11,652 to central services, but then I see there's other motions to take it out of corresponding departments.
That's correct.
So I see a $7,038.50, so that's 10,850, $11,000 there.
That, that same logic, based on your conversation the other night, talks about the, like, the facility maintenance, where you're going to see credits, reductions of the budget in things like Park and Rec, library, central services, and moving those over to, as Fran already had them in his budget, kind of correcting the individual department's numbers, putting them in one spot. Similarly, we did that with, what else did we do with? Some of the data processing costs that we had to go back and adjust again to kind of consolidate them into one spot. Again, you see telephone a couple of different times in there. We did update this, some of these corrections on here are for the prices that Michael was able to lock in for the fuels, whether it's gas, diesel, or heating oil or propane. So several of these corrections on here are not truly corrections, they're basically reflecting the locked-in fuel accounts. You see that on there. So it's kind of a mixed bag of some of the things that we talked about the other night. There were some corrections, some additional reductions, and working with some of the department heads, we were able to find a couple of other things to, to take off and just try to catch us up. Eliminate the cable TV was one of the things that was talked about, so that cable TV is out. There are several buildings that are going to be getting the town fiber, so that's handled one way. Those that are not getting the town fiber, we're contemplating putting in, giving them an allowance for getting, let's say, a YouTube account or a Hulu account or something like that to replace the cable TV. It'll, it'll save us money and still provide them with the ability to have television to watch when they're there.
Are you talking firehouses or everything?
Firehouses. There's, that's entry. 28 takes away, it's a $7,000 reduction, takes away Comcast TV at firehouses. And then you'll see, I believe, there's, 30 includes a increase to give them $100 for each of the three firehouses per month to get their own, like Hulu account or something, and Hulu of the cable TV. So you see, we're knocking out 7,000 and putting back in 3,600, so it's, it's a slight savings. But it gets us off the cable TV world and into the streaming world. Doing that similarly, I believe, at Park and Rec. Park and Rec is a different animal, they're kind of similar to Public Works, where they're going to get the town fiber. So that's going to be handled a little bit differently, but again, getting us out of the cable TV world and for the senior center to be able to have TV for the seniors as well as, you know, internet for folks that they wanted to do streaming on their own devices when they came in and exercised. And then the very, I think the last one, 50, is the adding of the operating transfer out to the community gift fund, the $3,000 that you mentioned the other night.
Yeah.
So that's, that's that one. I tried to shade them every other one so it's kind of easy to, hopefully to follow. I know it's a lot, I can make, I can make it even wider if you want a bigger space in between them if they're hard to follow.
So what's the flavor? Do you want to do motions tonight or just wait until we have everything and make all motions on the 26th?
Letting you wait.
I agree.
Okay. That's fine. So we have, I know we have, so the, the whole thing with the maintenance on the accounts in the various departments and then going over to Franny's account. Can you just go over that as far as where they are on?
On the numbers?
Yeah, just so that we can kind of see.
And.
So is the first one number 10?
Well, number nine before that, there was the reduction you had in central services for the other buildings. It was previously 1,000, bring it down to 500, so that's the $500 cut there.
Okay.
Then line 10, you're correct, entry 10, takes it out of central services and puts it into Public Works.
Okay.
For central service items. At line 25, entry 25, transfers 2,000 from the PD to Public Works. Line 35 takes it, Fran's number that he had in there was slightly off by, by $900, so I made that correction to bring it down. When you add all the other pieces together, it was off a little bit. Line 42 takes the $11,000 out of the library that was previously identified. Entry 46 takes 14.3 out of Park and Rec and gives that to the Public Works.
But does that, okay, so on library, does that take everything out of library? Was that the?
Negative, no.
So you left something in library and?
And, yep, exactly. The, in the case of library, we left like the elevator maintenance, pest control, things that don't run through Public Works. The same logic we used on all the other departments.
But Franny, Franny the other night talked about keeping $1,000, $1,500, something, something in their accounts for small items that they don't, that Public Works doesn't handle as far as that. But 11,000 seems like, I'm in the library, I just remember that number. Like, that seemed to be their number of, that you took everything out.
Uh, no, I'll find it for you.
I mean, all these departments are supposed to be doing their, their basic maintenance without dumping this all on the public works.
Well, that's, that's what I want to make sure.
I mean, everybody should still be kind of doing everything except for the maintenance stuff.
And this is the, the library one, for example. Building repairs, heating and AC, 11,000. And then the contract stays in, the vertical access stays in, sewer pump out stay in.
Right, so this 11,000, I believe, Franny? Where's Franny? Okay. So you were talking about, like, out of that $11,000, not putting the whole 11,000 into Public Works, leaving some money in library.
Correct, anything that they have contracts with, like the elevators.
Well, that was separate out of that 11,000, that's listed separately in the library for their elevators and whatever else. So that's not part of the 11,000. But you were talking the other night about, like, incidentals.
Yeah, I think Laura's right there, I think she's, she's got.
You actually, you actually had, you had 12 in your budget for her.
Yes, you are correct. You took out 11,000, it wouldn't leave any money left over for small maintenance repairs that the custodian would do. The 5,400 is basically contract stuff.
Right, that's what I thought.
So perhaps a smaller amount could be deducted from the 11,000 to cover smaller maintenance projects that we could do in-house without.
I thought that was the conversation, is to leave something in there. All right, so we'll review that and see once what we have to do. Because if we make the motion as is, then it'll end up, it'll have nothing.
So should we be seeing another account that offsets this?
Fran already had him accounted for in his facility maintenance, so it was double counted.
Oh, okay, all right.
Double counted.
Yeah, that, that was the whole thing, Franny had it in his, but they still had it in all the departments.
But is Public Works going to be taking on a lot more work in all these departments?
Because we're doing it now anyway. Everything that Kenny does, that's the money they're getting. So no matter what, the stuff that's not getting is all their contractual stuff, like the elevator, for example. We can't work on that, get it certified. So the elevator lifts, that all has to be done by a certified guy. Anything else, like their fire extinguishment inspections are all on, on the department. Anything that he's fixing or whatever, door knobs and heating and air conditioning, a lot of stuff, we don't do that.
You guys handle all that.
Right, so while we're always taking that money and putting it out like it's, it's like a circle a lot, you know, we're getting bills and passing them around and, so we get the bill now, we're just charging, we have the account that we make up. So it'd be a negative number, it'd be a pool of money that you'd be taking out to fix whatever at the library and goes in to the library as a negative number, so you guys will see, or anybody will see that we spent 11,000 at the library maintenance. So there's actually, I think, we've been in a comfortable hole, so they'd be separated, like Smith and Atwater and Police Department. The Police Department this year was, we did put 2,000 in because they're still under warranty for a little block while. So, you know, that number's going to change this. And Jimmy's got some contracts already with some of the maintenance money. So, so anything that's contracted with, that's not in our budget.
Okay, thanks. Okay. All right, so we'll review this offline and if we have any questions, we can ask, but we'll come back to this and, and make the motions when we finalize the budget on the, on the 22nd. So does anyone have any other questions related to the town budget at all?
I do.
Okay, fine.
I don't know if Louisa is here.
Is Louisa brief?
She's here.
Yep, there she is.
I, I just would like to know the rationale for your request to add to the part-time person because I, I've received some comments and asked questions from people and I'd like to understand your reasoning for that.
Between 2012 and today, we've had a 58% increase in caseload reported to me by the state of Connecticut. So they're not my numbers, it's a non-bias number. And when you look at full-time equivalents, to area towns, to us, for every three people that I see, area towns are doing about one. So our caseload is high and we're just looking to meet the needs of the community, then the need is there. We do a little bit more too than some area towns without offending them. We also help area towns when they have, you know, one town had called me and said they didn't know anything about relocation. They were required to be an officer, so I provided them with all our policies and the forms that I had developed because it's just good to help out neighboring towns and people as well.
So it's a workload, I mean, the need.
It is. I have about, about 800 active cases and we're trying to move our paper files into digital files. So that's what you do in between.
Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so. So that budget under social services originally, the original request, which was to increase her clerk support up to 24,800 and it was reduced down to 12,500, which is the current level. So, so can we get the numbers for our next report as to what that would, what the increase would be to increase that along with any associated social security and everything else on that? Just to have that motion.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? I know we went, Rory wasn't here the other night to, so. We went through the town budget pretty thoroughly and as a result, is these motions, some of these motions here, I know this is not all of them. So one thing you'll notice, it's motion 19. So one thing you'll notice, it's motion 19, is one of the things that was brought up was on the town attorney, the number of contracts that we have up for negotiation and the amount that was in there. The town manager did talk to the town attorney, and we are able to reduce that by $20,000 on that. Said that was, that's a good thing when we go through and do all of the motions.
And I would want to note, if I could, Madam Mayor, in talking with him, he did recommend leaving like that 6,000 in there just in case there's, while we're not doing any contract negotiations for collective bargaining agreements next year, we could have memorandums of understanding or grievances and things associated with those collective bargaining agreements. So it's just to keep that remaining funding there for that.
Okay. So, one thing I noticed on these motions here, where, that's not on here that we need to get some additional information, and we may have that tonight also, is there was two positions that we talked about.
Yes.
One of them was an increase in the finance department from a current employee, from part-time to full-time, and the other one is a reduction in the building department on the part-time building official, going from eliminating the position because of the premise of the position, why that position was put in there a few years ago. So I know just prior to the meeting, Chris had hand, the town engineer had handed out paperwork here in regards to the building department. So, Chris, if you would just like to...
Sure. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to go through the process of building permits. We'll go through the table, and then I will talk about the issues with eliminating that position. So first, the process of accepting a building permit application, we then have to review the plans. And if there's any code issues, we have the applicant then resubmit, so we'd have to re-review the plans for code compliance. Sometimes it includes a site visit and a pre-construction meeting prior to issuing the permits. Then inspections are generally a minimum of two visits per permit. And if the work doesn't meet code, let's go back to review the code, and then discuss what potential remedies there are for the contractor. You can generally only complete five to six inspections per day per inspector. So then, once the permit is acceptable, the work is acceptable, then we go into our permit line process online and input all of the inspection details, and make sure that those are all contained in the building permit. And then we can close out the permit and issue the certificate of compliance, completion and a certificate of occupancy. We also have to have coverage for vacations and lunch. So then if we take a look at the table, you can see that the permits are increasing generally over the past nine years. I think it's the number of data that we have there. And just in this past quarter alone, we've had 318 permits, which is the highest for this period for that, for the past nine years. And with the increasing number of permits, as well as the increase in cost of materials, you can see that the revenue has increased significantly over the past few years, and with the two highest years being the last two years. I just want to point out that this does not include any permit fees for the high school or the police department, because those were waived for the local fees. So the revenue numbers you see do not include any permit fees associated with those projects. So if you, let's see. So that's it for the table, so if you take a look, those, the permit numbers as well as the revenue are presented on those tables. So the issues with eliminating the part-time inspector would be decrease in customer service. Inspections would go from generally one week up to three weeks, because we won't be able to do all the inspections that are required of the permits that we get. And then we will also need to increase the consultant fees that we have, because that's how we would have to cover the office for vacations or sick time if we do not have the part-time inspector. And overall, it's very difficult to find anybody available for that type of position. And it's also very expensive. And we also have some upcoming significant projects. We have the public works addition, as well as the RWA is doing an upgrade to the treatment plant. And there's also a significant electrical project for the Milford Apparel Company. I want to also point out that this position does not receive any benefits or time off, paid time off. And we also are now, with the new blight ordinance, as an additional burden on the department that we have to make sure. One of the big issues right now is compliance at the plaza. And we've been spending quite a bit of time in there, making sure that it's safe to be able to go into the businesses and to work with the owner as well as the contractor, to make sure that it's up to code and also safe for people to go to. As you can see, the revenues cover the cost of running the department, including the part-time inspector. We also have to have office hours to meet with contractors as they come in, if they have questions. And having a part-time building inspector is the most cost-effective way to meet the needs of the department. Thank you. If you have any questions, we also have a building official here as well.
So what percentage of the permits actually require inspections?
All of them.
Every permit you have to go out and inspect?
Yes.
Yes, 100%, every permit.
So a lighting, if they do one for lighting, you have to go out and...
Yes, absolutely, you have to do a rough inspection and a final inspection.
Okay. Okay.
Because that would include potentially electrical upgrades as well, so we'd want to make sure that that's approved and up to code.
Okay. Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, so what's the job description of this position?
I believe it's a system building.
It's a part-time building official.
And it was put in place for...
We added it when we did the high school, the police department.
That it was to help facilitate that work in addition to some, was it some of the paperwork also for the state and things? Was that part of this?
I haven't seen that original request or...
So I guess, I guess the question I had is, what did we do before, before this?
We have this permit to process.
The other, the other thing is, is the lead time on the inspection process. We've got a home builder here in town, who lives in town, who's building homes on Tuckett Road. The lead time, we'll say for like a nail inspection on plywood on the outside of your home, would be two weeks out, two to three weeks out. Just to look at plywood that's been nailed off properly. So there were extended lead times.
How many work out of your office now?
One and a half.
One and a half, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading this right.
Slightly, slightly less than a half, I think it's 18 hours a week.
There was a part-time building official probably 25 years ago as well.
Well, I recall when we put this, when this position was filled, it was for a specific timeframe.
That's what I remember also, yeah.
That there was going to be an end to it.
Right.
And it was pretty much when the, when the high school and the police department were at the completion phase. That's what I recall.
That's what I remember also, yes.
Would you mind giving, give me just a quick description of, if I come for a building permit, what would be the basic time that you would account for, for doing that? Or say I was doing a kitchen over.
Yeah.
Come for the permit, now you come out?
Well, if you were to come into the office, what would happen would be, you would ask, hey, how do I, how do I apply for a building permit? I tell you the process, you go to the kiosk, you get registered, you go and you fill out your permit for your building. And if you're doing plumbing, you fill out a separate permit for your plumbing, and then if you're doing electrical, you do a separate permit for electrical.
But I mean, what you would be doing, what would, when I walk in and I get a build permit for a kitchen, what are going to be your responsibilities to me? Like, how many different times do you have, like, do you have to spend with me?
With you? Okay, so we'll say the administrative assistant would handle the paperwork then, okay? I would take and I would review the paperwork, issue all three permits, okay? Then when you were ready, you would give me a call and say, we're ready for a rough inspection. I would come out, I would do a rough electrical, rough plumbing, rough framing inspection, okay? Once that's completed, the pass, I don't need to come back until you have your finishes installed, okay? But if you don't pass, I need to tell you what you did wrong and cite the code citation, if you should challenge my decision or what I find wrong. And that can take some time sometimes.
So you basically have to come out to see me basically probably around three times and whatever paperwork you have to do those three times.
Three to four times, yeah, because if you don't pass, then if I go back and you don't pass again, I have to go back again.
Right.
You know, and then in addition to that, you also have an insulation inspection, where I have to come and make sure you put the proper insulation in, you know?
So you have a few hours at each permit?
Easily, yeah, and there's, you know, there's fire blocking, there's penetration ceiling.
But doesn't it depend on what you're doing for a remodel? Because if you're just replacing cabinets in a floor and whatever else, you don't need any permit, it says it right online.
That's true, however, the caveat there is, is you need an electrical permit for almost everything. So it, one way or another, it all intermingles.
Right, but I mean, it depends on a remodel.
Yep.
It depends on what you're exactly doing. On a new construction, that's totally different. But if you're switching out your cabinets and you're putting in new flooring and everything else, you don't need a permit for it.
Well, and just like looking at their numbers, like for January, they had 123 permits they gave out. So I'm trying to imagine, you have 123 permits, and then you have a few hours worth of inspections, paperwork and everything else.
Phone calls.
So if you say three hours of permit with all the little details, times 123, you're like, almost like 400 hours right there, just in... I'm just trying to get a...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Then each trains might not be completed at the same time, so you might have to go for a plumbing inspection, then electrical inspection. They might not all be at the same time.
Thank you.
Okay. You've listed, excuse me, guys, you've listed, I like this chart you guys put together, thank you for doing that. But you listed a bunch of inspections. Any chance you have any idea, out of all these inspections that you listed in here, how many of them went towards the high school and police department?
So as far as the high school and the police department, I can't, I haven't broken that down, but I can say this. With those numbers, I would say Carl has covered a third of those inspections, and I've done the other two-thirds.
So I think a couple of years back, where I think we had the highest, 1,200 permits inspections, I think permits. That would probably be the highest rate at the high school.
I'm confused, I'm sorry. So 1,200...
It's on the backside.
A couple of years ago, the highest number was like 1,200, I think, right?
2021.
2021? And I was aware, I think the high school was in the full production, full construction.
So out of that 1,200, how many were the high school and PD?
We can get that number for you, I think we can get that.
I think that would be useful for us, because that's what we're assessing, is the, you know, the position was brought on for that. So if that's over and those inspections are going to go away, we want a real number that we're looking at moving forward.
So if you look at the years '23 and '24, there really weren't any high school inspections to speak of. It was very minimal at that time, I believe, because it was just kind of wrapping up. So those are real numbers, 1,100 and 1,140, 1,133. Those would essentially be the number of permits issued without the high school being involved. So there's just been a lot of work going on in town recently.
And these are, yeah, calendar year, okay.
Yeah, calendar year, yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions in regards to this? Okay, thank you. Okay, so the other position was in finance, in regards to going from part-time to full-time.
So, as everybody I'm sure is aware, half our department was transitioned in the last couple of years, our fourth-person department. Two people were brand-new, still learning the ropes. We were swamped, we had a temporary person in between our last accountant and the current accountant, who made quite a mess of things that we're still trying to unravel. And we have a temporary person there helping us now with bank recs. And the hope would be that once we get the process in place, we've had numerous days of Munis training in the last week, once this person has a grasp on the system and able to relay these proper steps to all of us, one of the tasks that Terry going to full-time would help out would be portions of the bank rec. Obviously, the bank rec would still fall on the staff accountant, but there's a lot of steps, especially in the importing of checks. Right now, we are getting the, there's Munis accounts payable checks that, from the Board of Ed come over, and our checks are Munis checks, our payroll checks are Munis checks. The Board of Ed checks are still on their old system still, so it's a manual entry. And obviously, you know the number of employees the Board of Ed has compared to us, to manually have to go in and to verify those checks have cleared, because they're not Munis system checks that can be imported into the Munis software. So the bank rec process, while it sounds like it might be a simplified, you know, step, really is rather labor-intensive, and again, the gentleman we have there working now, trying to get us caught up, is really doing a great job unraveling some of the situations. Additionally, we have very, we have multiple Excel spreadsheets. Cash comes in, we have our massive cash spreadsheet with the 40 or 50 funds on it, and then from each of those is a sub-spreadsheet, so, okay, it goes, and we had an expenditure in the 24-25 capital improvement program, okay, it's on the cash spreadsheet that way. Then you got to go to the 24-25 cash spreadsheet and say, which project was it in? Was it X, Y, or Z? And then all, they have to all mesh, obviously, and become one unified number. So there's a lot of steps involved, and again, one of the things that Debbie's trying to do also is trying to simplify life. Again, is there a way to link these, these spreadsheets, hopefully, that we can get it, simplify the process? But there's just a ton of work over there that we are still digging out from the transition of people. And previously, we had talked to Terry about trying to go full-time. Her kids were younger, it wasn't really a right time, and now she has the bandwidth to do it. I think it'd be a smart move for us to bring her from the 28 to 35 hours, to hopefully, once we get in a good place, not to lose momentum and keep, keep that good thing going, keep our financial records intact. Because right now, the comfort level is minimal until we get things squared away. And we're closed, we just had more days of training last week on closing the book, Michael, Dennis, myself, Debbie. There were multiple, I mean, to the tune of hundreds of items, we had to go in and fix, because the initial setup of Munis wasn't done properly. So things that should have hit this account were hitting this account. We had to go in and touch every transaction, every invoice, and put them to the right account. It's, the stress over there is crazy, because again, there's not a huge cushion or comfort factor that what we have going on there, until we can get our... factor that what we have going on there, until we can get our act together and get on the right track, the confidence level is low. So I think, once we get caught up and stay caught up, I think this would be a major help to keep us on the right track. She's more than willing to do it. She has the Excel expertise to handle all the spreadsheets we want to give her. I think it'd be a smart move to go to the 28 to 35 hours.
So what's the issue with the Board of Ed checks and our checks? I thought they were on Munis.
Payroll is not.
We implemented it with Fidelity, so for historical reasons, we've had a very smooth transition with Munis, and it's working incredibly well for us.
My payroll checks, though.
The payroll will transition.
Well.
We're running peril.
Wrong.
So.
So that's a, that should be a temporary issue then, right?
We'll step down with Alio, we'll continue for historical data with that at a much lower cost, and we'll implement Munis in July?
No, the button doesn't, won't come on board until, won't be ready for parallel testing until August, so we're shooting for January.
So we actually, this button, we're just recognized nationally for our work and moving that forward. And I'll share that with you when we present ours. We spent a lot of time. Our staff has spent a ton of time with Munis. They've wanted to do it the right way, and it's worked. And if we can assist in any way, we will. So I reach out saying that if we can help, it's a phone call.
Anthony, it seems like what you described is a temporary issue. So have you looked at bringing in temporary help to help you?
We have a gentleman there now.
Because the thing is, once you bring somebody from part-time to full-time, it usually doesn't go away. It usually stays that way. Once you get caught up on the workflow, now we have potentially, you know, you know, too many work hours there for what the work is. And I doubt very highly that you'll come back to us and ask her to go part-time again at that point. And then we've incurred the expense of benefits and everything else. So if it's a temporary issue, I think we'd be better served by treating it as a temporary issue.
Do you want to give a six-month till December 31st, instead of doing a whole year?
I don't know if we can do that without, can we do that on a temporary basis like that, without having to give her benefits?
She's already over the limit for benefits.
Yeah.
At 22 hours.
Oh, okay.
So that's not a factor, it's just the hourly.
Just the hours?
The hourly wage on there.
We could do that if that would increase the comfort level with it, we could, you know, do it to a time certain.
Can you, so can you prepare a motion for half-year? Because she's in here for a full year.
Correct.
So it would be a decrease from the budget for a half-year, to do it for a half-year, whatever that effect would be.
Does their CBA allow it?
Pardon me?
Does their CBA allow it?
That's a good question, that's a Rory question.
Does the CBA allow?
Going from temporarily full-time back to part-time?
I would think if we were going to do a temporary change, we would handle it as an MOU or something like that, and define the period. And so as long as the union is okay with it, the CBA doesn't, you know, preclude it.
Okay. So you can just check that out before the next meeting, that would be great. Okay. All right. So between that, those were the two positions and the sheet of motions.
I'll fix that first motion, too, so it's correct.
That should cover the rest of our, the questions that we've had.
One other question, Anne. Have there been any other departments in town that have kind of chipped in on their end to help you guys with this stuff?
I would say, yeah, Michael Flubiani, purchasing, Dennis Panone, I mean, the Munis web is a tangled web. And we have weekly meetings, Mike, we all sit in this room, we go, we have a list of how many items on the list, that Dennis has a running list that we try to tackle one at a time. And it's been, it's been a collaborative effort amongst, you know, again, Mike, Rory, Michael, Debbie, myself, we meet every, and Jill, once a week, we sit here and go over the Munis problems.
Seems like we, this is like, it happens all the time, we just constantly hear about Munis, just nightmare non-stop. So basically...
If I knew now what I knew then.
It's a mistake.
Or then, well, I wouldn't say it's a mistake, I'd just say it's more complex than I think we thought.
But it's a mess right now, right?
It's, it's, it's not.
And it's not a mess this week.
We've definitely made a lot of progress in the last, particularly in the last few months, and then approving that added pace program definitely is putting us on the right track.
We're unamassed by the next update.
You're funny, you're a funny, funny boy.
Does anyone have any other questions in regards to the town operations?
I, I would, I watched part of the class. What about the fire department? I know you had said something about them, how can you come back? I don't know, what does that stand?
With, with cuts?
Are you asking them to come back?
Yes, it's not, it's not on here, so it's coming for the next, it's still.
For the next, okay.
It's not part, it's not part of these motions here.
Yeah, their cuts are on there. Their additional cuts are...
Fire department, oh yes, starting at 28.
Yeah, the seven, and then 33, so that the, those, the seven and 13 equals that 20 that you were looking to kick out, and then the other two, 31 and 32, are just a function of the fuel pricing. And then it was, 29 is fire, talks about, there was an estimate for copier usage that was overstated. Yeah, those are the, those are the four or five motions, talk about the fire department.
Okay. Is there anything in our leases with the firehouses that say anything to do with what we have to provide them for?
Yeah.
TV or whatever?
I think it just says generically TV, doesn't say whether you're using Comcast or a streaming service. So I think we're going to be covered, and Michael's working with, we're in the process of, the leases are up for renewal anyway. So Michael's working with the town attorney to get the proper language to kind of broaden it to say...
Okay, I just want to make sure that was, that that is covered.
We're going to change it all to the streaming, or credit towards being used to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. So if there's no other questions on the town side, then we will move over. Now we will go to the Board of Education.
Reid, did that answer your question, like, you just said the same about the fire, more about the fire department, or?
Yeah, I was just curious as to how they were going to handle the 20,000, which is not, which is here.
Yeah, okay.
So may I just be clear, the two additional ones, you want our motion to add the lease to restore her clerk, which she wanted, and to change Terry from full year to half-year.
Right, if it's possible.
Yep. Okay.
Well, and to, if, and the figures, if we were to eliminate the part-time building, like, just so we have it, so we can see what it is.
Got it.
I know, public comments at the end, sorry.
It's like everything else, about a week ago, I had my whole weekend wondering about this.
This one's not, this is, this is, this is, this is, huh? This one's on those two.
All right.
I got this, this was all. All right, so, I thank you for your patience. At the last meeting, there were 10 questions that were asked at the end of the meeting. I gave Mr. Downs a packet that I assume you received.
Yeah.
Electronically, I assume you received that. In addition to that packet, what I handed out to you tonight is the rest of that information that I didn't have at that time. So if you go through the 10 questions, there was a request for information for debt deflation, for school choice, a lot to do with the electric bills, with solar bills. Well, my recommendation would be for the solar electricity conversation, so we have clarification, understanding. If we could get a meeting together with the electrical company and the solar company to sit and come to a clear understanding for all of that, because we seem to be on different levels of understanding.
Scott, can you just stand in front of the microphone, please, for, because it's for home, it's them filming, or if you take the microphone with you, but...
You'd be like Johnny Cash.
All right. I take that. And you're broken. Jesus. Take that.
Put that on my tab.
That comes out of your budget.
Open choice. Open choice, as you know, we have a number of students who, Chef O'Neil, that we receive from New Haven, minority students that come into the district. We have 24 students that get approved each year by the board. We have $3,000 that we receive per student to go towards our educational costs. We do not provide transportation for those students, New Haven does for that, for those students. Pre-K tuition, we have set our number for pre-K tuition, that has been shared at the board level, and I believe you are aware of that, for to offset costs for that program. My administrators are here this evening, if you have any questions specific to the questions that you asked me at the last meeting, I'm just going to go through those. Excess costs, it's explained there. If you have questions for, anyone that's here, feel free to ask. All of the UI bills are attached, electricity, solar credits are there with explanations, student transportation, outside funding, grants, pre-K, how are they shown? That's answered there in detail. Munis, the Munis word. So, as I mentioned, and I'm going to pass this out, that the amount of work that was completed in preparation for this, it was from Tyler Technologies, and it's a thank-you note, I'd like to thank your team in North Branford Schools for the work time and persistence you put into bringing the employee access punch-in-out button into existence. I'm proud to say you've been instrumental in not only getting this on development's radar, but got it pushed to the top of their list of enhancements. It's my privilege to let you know that the button is complete and should be ready by summer's end for all Tyler EERP customers at no cost. You were pivotal in making them see this as an enhancement and not a modification. Thanks again for being influential in this process and getting a win for all clients. Best regards from their manager. So I don't need to pass that out unless you want a copy of it. But as I stated before, it was implemented with Fidelity. There was a great deal of training that went into it, countless hours from our team, our accounting team, we're the biggest show in town, as you know, with the most purchases. And we decided that we wanted to transition from Alio over to Munis in a timely fashion so that everyone was prepared when we did it. And at first, it was bumpy, and we've put a great deal of time in, we're proud of where we're at with that, and I extend that again. If we can help in any way, we'd be glad to do that with our personnel. I'm not going to read through all the questions. The last request that just came in a day ago was for the last 20 years of enrollment, and I sent you a, or I just handed to you 20 years of enrollment. I closed Stanley T. Williams in 2009, 2010, in my second year here, and we have held steady at, from 2020, at 1,600 students to 1,570 projected for next year over the last six years. So we're in a holding pattern, and as the building inspector shared earlier with the number of permits and houses going up, we see, we estimate, in the next 10 to 15 years, an increase in our school enrollment as well. We, our numbers are showing that, our K enrollment right now, we're at 102 students right now for next year. We usually pick up a load of students during the summer month as well. So it's strong right now, and every indication is that our enrollment will continue. I also just attached that we are 13 teachers less over the last 20 years during this time in the core teaching areas. So as we have decreased in enrollment, we have decreased our teaching load as well. We are down 13, 13 teachers right now. We're currently staffed at appropriate levels to maintain our class size at our elementary schools. We offer the full gamut to our students, we're proud to be a comprehensive high school. We just received accreditation again from NEASC with many accommodations. They spend a great deal of time and effort speaking about the state-of-the-art high school, the programs that our students, approximately 500 enrolled, that they have the opportunity to take. I welcome you to come at any time to view the high school, to see the programs that we offer in the elective areas, and those are ones that I really like to focus, I call the ones on the corner. Our culinary classroom is spectacular. We still have a traditional automotive running out of the back of our set design room in the auditorium. We have an engineering program, we have an art program, just to name a few of the many opportunities for the kids, we're very proud of that, and we'd like to continue to be able to offer those to our students. And we understand there's a cost for doing business. So we're here tonight, you have the 10 questions, you have the 11th question that I just shared with you for enrollment and staffing and where we're at, and we're here to answer questions.
Okay, so the staffing, according to this, is just NVHS, it's not...
Just the high school.
It's not total staffing?
I just did the high school.
Okay.
I just did the high school. You didn't ask for that?
I didn't ask the question, so I didn't know what the question was.
No, no. So what was asked of me was the enrollment, and I wanted to show just a quick look at, you know, the closing of Stanley T., and then downsizing 13 students. If I go through and look at all the buildings over the last 20 years, our staffing levels are down accordingly. are down accordingly.
So what year does the enrollment numbers, do they include your pre-K students?
Yes.
Okay, and so what year did we start the pre-K program? Because that, just to have reference, because we now have three sections. So that's extra students.
2015, going once, 2015.
But 2015, you had the current setup of three, pre-K four, and, okay. So when you went to the integrated model, or the model that you currently have, you started out with one pre-K four, and then you added two more sections, correct? And at one point in time, your pre-K three was half days, then it went to full time, then it went back to half days, five days, and now it's going to half day, four days, correct? Okay. So these numbers reflect the additional students of pre-K four. We aren't comparing apples to apples because you've added some more sections of pre-K four in the recent years. That would be at least 30 students, because if you have 15 in each class, and before you only had one section, and I know you had to have that because you had special ed students, and then you have the mentors. So yes, you had that. But then you added two more sections, so we'll just call it at 30. When did that come into place? 21, 22, 22, 23? I'm not exactly sure.
I think it's three.
Three years ago, so, including this year. So we're back to like 22, 23 is when we'd have a plus 30 in there. And going forward, okay. As far as the other information on here, the reason I asked the question on the old NVHS UI building, or UI cost, is because in our last meeting that we had in regards to this, these costs should have went over to the permanent project building. And I can't tell from these invoices how far down all of these invoices would be for the old. It just says "old" on this top sheet, but how many does it, is it, and what's the total amount down here?
The easiest way to see the totals for the electricity would be on that spreadsheet that I did specifically for electricity and solar. And we have breaks crossed out for last year by building, and then current, and then proposed.
On the sheet that was...
It's a spreadsheet.
That was given...
It should be in the packet.
In this package, or what was given to the town manager?
The town manager, maybe?
I think it's the one that Scott came up with.
It's the one that you got two weeks ago, or a week ago, whatever it was.
You have a spreadsheet here.
Yeah, that would have all the totals on it.
Yeah.
You mean this one, Tom? Exhibit A here? Are you talking this one? This doesn't break it out on the old high school. Right. I asked for the old high school.
Oh, okay.
That was tore down.
Yep, yep, yep.
What those energy costs were, because those bills were supposed to go to the permanent project building committee, because we were told that they were being billed for at least seven to nine months for electric, on a building that wasn't there. So if the contractor went into the, that the server, the transformer was still there, and they hooked up for the building of the second phase of the school, then that should go to the project.
Right, okay, yep, I got you.
And so I can't tell that from here, and the spreadsheets that, because I have the spreadsheets that Mike sent to all of us, and you can't tell from that either. I have them here, and I have the spreadsheets. It doesn't say, it doesn't break it down. So I'm not exactly sure how we're supposed to read these, or the data on here. Unfortunately, giving us, you know, 100 sheets of paper with nothing to explain what it relates to is hard to follow.
You asked for the bills. You wanted all the numbers. That's what you got.
I know, but I can't relate it to information that was sent to us. I can't cross-check because I don't know what it goes to on here. It's hard to follow, so I'm not exactly sure if that was the intent.
The intent meaning just to give you a lot of paper?
I'm not sure.
I don't think that was the intent.
I mean, I see the, I'm trying to follow what you paid to the UI two-year budget, what you have budgeted. So I'm, am I correct in the budget that we received that shows electricity? Are you talking UI?
There's UI, there's long-term electric, and there's solar.
Right.
So in regard to the old high school, we're talking several fiscal years ago, so...
No, we're talking, the information that was given to us, we're talking from July of 20, when did they go, July of 23?
Yeah.
To, we were told they stopped getting bills like in February or March of '24 on the old high school.
But our students were still in the high school, so we had to pay the electricity bill.
No, not in the part that was, what we were told by your accounts payable person in the meeting in the town manager's office on June 6th of 2024. You were there, Scott was there, Kim Dawson was there, Judy Bannon was there, I was there, Marie was there, Bruce Abelson was there, Anthony was there. This is a meeting that we had on solar and electricity. Lori from your office was there and said that there were UI bills from the old high school that was tore down, that you were receiving bills on that school from when it was tore down to about February or March. So there weren't students in that school because there was no school. So that, those were the bills that I asked for, so that we can take those bills and put them to the project, and you can get reimbursed for them.
Can you put that in writing to Lori specifically? Everything you just said with the months, so that you're not getting the totality of everything? If you specifically wanted just that, can you just put it in writing to her so we can specifically get that?
Well, I...
Okay, so that would be wonderful, because then we'd have it in writing.
Well, I just followed the instructions that I was told to do, is to go through. I know, but it's the first, it says that, but how many of them?
It's some work to go through it. You have to read through them.
I don't know how far down it goes. It just says "old" and "NVHS," and there's a lot of, a lot of UI bills.
Well, it would be 49 Caputo Road, right?
Yeah, but the other, the other bills are also 49 Caputo Road on the high school that we were in, the new part of the high school.
Oh, okay.
So if there's several meters, I don't know that.
This goes to April?
Right. And so, so when I look at the UI bills that we got in the first packet that Mike had sent us, that they gave them, there weren't any UI bills for the auditorium for Jerome or the middle school to show the credit on there. Because on their budget, they have budgeted cost for Jerome Harrison for electricity. So that's why I asked, does that include just the UI? Jerome Harrison is UI. Is it just the electric cost from UI? Because Jerome has a credit. There shouldn't be any bill, according to the information they gave us, as to how much the credit was. So there shouldn't be any bills to Jerome Harrison or to NBIS, because they just told us there were credits, that they still had credits. And then there's solar, which is Altus, which is the actual energy uses. So that's why I wanted clarification as to what is included in those categories.
Wait, I started off by saying I would love to get a meeting together with the players that can sit specifically from UI, from the solar company, so there's an understanding. Because when I ask Anthony, or Martha, or my people, if there's clarity and clarification on understanding the credit, how it works, what's happening, everybody seems to have a different answer. And we're going around and around with this. I think if we could get in the same room, we could easily get an understanding that we all understand. That would be my suggestion.
Can I, if I'm just reading this, you're still 300, over $300,000? And you have to pay that by the end of June?
So the $300,000 is in anticipation for invoices through the end of June, but you'll see our year-to-date expenditures are $426,000, which already exceeds our budgeted number. So no matter how you cut that pie, whether it's in electric or solar, we're still over budget, and we still need more money for next year. And that's what the full year of the credits included.
I guess I don't understand. I think you have to pay all the bills by June 30th. No?
Yes.
And you're saying that your $300,000...
That's, that's, so those, that encumbrance column, of course, we don't know exactly what the bills for April, May, and June are going to come in at. So it's an encumbrance. It's an open purchase order with our best guess of what those invoices are going to come in at. That's what an encumbrance is. Our year-to-date expenditures are actual invoices that have been paid. When you add those two numbers together compared to our current budget, the anticipated overage is $300,000. Our actual year-to-date expenditures are $426,000. Those are bills that are out the door and paid. So when you compare just what we paid already to what we budgeted, we're already over budget.
So have you encumbered that amount of money towards...
Yes, that's why...
That's all encumbered?
Yeah, exactly. I report to the board every month that we're over on electricity and solar.
Okay, so on, for the 24, 25 budget, I'm looking at your status quo budget for '25, '26. So you have a column of the current year's budget, and you have for NBIS, electricity, you have budget in this budget, so I'm assuming that that's the budget you're working off of, you have $106,92 budgeted for electricity. But at the meeting that we had on March 25th, you said that you had a credit for UI at that time of over $100,000. So...
But the credit sits on account.
Well, that's why I asked, because they don't on the town side. That's what, that's why I wanted to see the UI bill, because if you have...
I don't think we also supplied you with the solar, the solar bills as well, so you could see...
Well, that I know there would be a solar bill, because that is your electric cost. Like, the town gets those also.
Yeah.
But you have nothing budgeted for solar for '24, '25, which I don't understand.
Because when we did this 12 months ago, I didn't know. I, it was, everything was a guess.
No, but at last year's budget, when we went through and we found out about, because on both sides, both the town and the Board of Ed, none of us knew about the solar at that point in time.
No, we did know about the solar fees, because I had increased this current year's budget, and I was directed to reduce electricity and solar by $275,000 for this current year, which I did, and I am now in the red.
So our conversation was, how do we get the credits to the Board of Education? Because we, we, UI was not...
And those credits are on our account, but we are, they won't just give them all to us at once.
No, they get, they get used down. So if you have a...
Right.
If the, if the credit's 100, I'm just going to take, I'm just going to take...
Jerome is our smallest school, as far as electricity goes. So the amount that the solar produces that's allocated to Jerome is more than we're using. So that credit, it really isn't getting used up, because say...
But you don't pay a bill to the, you don't...
No, we don't. But that, what I'm saying to you is that credit can't be used anywhere else right now but Jerome.
Correct.
Unless we can get it straightened out, that it can be applied to some of our bigger buildings.
Yeah, but my, so my point is, you have, if Jerome has a credit and you're not paying UI right now, your budget here for 20...
Is $50,000.
Right.
Yeah.
So you have $50,000 budgeted for Jerome for electricity, but you're not paying them anything.
No, but like I said, no matter how you cut the pie, that $50,000 has to go to solar. So at our board meeting in a couple of weeks, I'm going to ask for budget transfers to move from electricity into the solar accounts, but the bottom line isn't going to change. We're still going to be over.
But, so in our conversation last year when we went through this, and then we had the meeting in June, the way we could get, the only way we could get you the credit was to allow you, and that was the motion that we made in April, was to allow the 2% fund. And that's where we...
The credits aren't, the credits aren't money. It's not a check. It sits on our accounts.
I know, I know that, yes.
And I did, I reduced our electricity lines by $275,000 for this current year. I did as I was instructed.
Well, you reduced them, so that means that the 275, we got to you. The only way we could get it to you, because we don't have the money, is that we gave you the money in the 2% fund. We said you can allow, you can save...
But how?
Because you would, because you would have the money.
You can't put a credit in the 2% fund.
No, 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 but we, we said you should have the money in your balance, because you didn't, you wouldn't have to pay the UI.
And those funds are still sitting in a credit.
Yeah, so you, so you wouldn't have to budget for electricity for Jerome, because you didn't pay them anything.
But like I said, I'm taking that money and transferring it to the solar fee line, and so in the end, it's still going to be the same amount. We're still going to be over.
Well, I, I personally don't understand, after all this discussion, why you didn't budget for solar, because that's your electric cost. They take how many kilowatts?
Because at this time last year, we were still that much more confused about the whole situation. Probably really not that much more clear now.
That's again why, can I make it for a third time? Can we get together with those who actually know, who can sit with us and explain all of this? So we're not doing this, and we're crystal clear, not on interpretation, not on whatever, that we, we get what we're, so it's accurate. So we're not doing the same thing next year. If we get UI and the solar company that we're paying to together one time, and we ask these questions...
Well, the solar company, there's nothing to get to, because they just get, they take the kilowatt hours.
Well, we have three different explanations.
The expenses listed here are actual expenditures for a full fiscal year. So those are, those are, '23, '24, those are actual expenditures, credits included. And the same thing for this current year. The actual is from July, and I believe those numbers are through February, or possibly the middle of March. I don't know. I'd have to go back and look. But the point is, those are real numbers. So yes, can I take that $50,000 from Jerome electricity? Absolutely, and I'm going to, in two weeks at the board meeting, ask for a transfer to move that $50,000 to the solar electric line. But in the end, it's not going to make any difference, because I'm, we're still going to be over at the bottom.
Look, all right, what we need to do is put the brakes on here, and have a financial, a finance meeting, right?
Solar meeting.
Yeah, yeah, but with the finance group. So they, with Anthony, maybe Rose...
Well, that's what we did last year.
No, but we're way, we're way into this now, Rose. Last year, when this was all starting, there's still as much confusion as there was a year ago when we had that meeting. There's more now, because we don't know what can get transferred, what we can use, how we budget it. we budget it, you know? And, and we're going around in circles here. So my suggestion would be for the fourth time, getting together and having a meeting. And then it's.
Before the budget's overdone.
We'd have to do it in the next two weeks.
You can't do it in this format.
No, this is painful for.
Nail it out.
And that's fine, it's fine, but in the end, there's, that, the, the meeting, the, there was nothing budgeted. And the money that went into the 2% fund on there was to pay for the expenses that were not budgeted for solar. That's, we went through all of this last year on there, but there wasn't anything budgeted. So we'll just have the meeting, we'll go through.
I may be outing them right now.
Just get, just need to get this ironed out.
Well, we, on the town side, on the town side, we asked Anthony the other night and we went through everything and it's, and we're fine.
So what's going to happen here is the town's going to help the Board of Ed with, with, with electric, electricity, solar, and the Board of Ed's going to help us with meaningness.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think UI is going to help us and the solar company are going to help us with because there's a lot of misinformation.
Yeah. So we will get a meeting and go through on solar, that's on there.
All right, any, any other questions of the 10 that were requested and the enrollment? I think we're finished with that one. Any, anything else?
Yes, so on the health insurance.
Health insurance, okay.
So I, I saw the sheet and everything and so from the data that was given to us, it looks like one year you paid 13 months. And then, so that mean, you, you, because you paid July and June, just fine. So the next year, because you already had one paid, you should have just paid 11 on there.
This was well discussed with the auditor and because one year was prepaid with 13 and one year was short with 11, it actually balances out.
Correct, but according to your sheet, it says that you made 12 payments the next year. So that doesn't balance, according to what I read on the sheet. It said 12 payments made.
All of the information.
How does this pertain to next year's budget? What, I don't, we keep going back to this that has nothing to do, we, we need to move to a number.
Your health insurance increase on your budget for next year shows $900,000 increase, which is not all totaled to the increase that you're actually getting in the premium.
Yeah, so about $400,000 of that is because last year we paid, and for July of this year, we paid in June of 2024, which is no different than the past 18 years that that's been done.
Right, and, and that's fine as long as you budget for 12, you paid for 12. But one year, you budgeted for 12, according to the sheet, and you paid for 13. So that, so that makes it looks like you, you have an extra payment.
And there, one year there was 13 payments and one year there was 11. So in her eyes, it balanced out. And she's going to consider the June 2024 payment as a prepaid expense as it always has been.
Which is fine. I, I understand that part, but then is, does your budget reflect?
The budget going forward reflects 12 months, July to June.
Right, so if you, so.
But let me ask, is our audit complete?
Our audit is complete.
Okay, our audit is complete. It's complete. Is, is the town's complete?
The EFS was filed with the state.
No. The town is not complete. Our audit was complete in when, December?
Prior to, it was, we had our EFS, which is our annual expenditure report filed with the state prior to December 31st, which is required by the law.
Ours is done. Is yours done?
No, we know that.
Okay. So if you have a question, we have the accountant, you can ask the accountant that question.
We haven't, we've been.
Okay, so our audit is done.
But, but it's reflecting in your budget that.
The budget is reflecting 12 months for next year as it should be, so.
No, but in, in your increase in your budget.
Yeah, it's $800,000. $400,000 of that is the 9%, increase that we are anticipating. And the other $400,000 is to add back the June payment that I, that, the July payment that I just explained was paid in June of 2024.
Right, so this year, there should only be 11 payments instead of 12.
Next year, I have to budget for 12, July to June.
Right, I, I understand that part of it. But in the data that you gave us, it was, we, you have this many payments and you have, you know, you've made nine and you have three more to go, but it's, you have one X, you, you already paid one. You started the year off with only, only 11 payments because you paid July in June.
Yeah, and that's why this year was reduced. That's why we're asking for $400,000 more because this year was reduced because I paid July in June.
Well.
Just like it's been done for the past 18 out of the 20 years.
It's not, it's, it's not the how many payments, it's the, what you budgeted and what was originally presented to us was 12.
And again, the auditor reviewed all of that.
Okay, so when, so we will ask the auditor prior to finalizing the budget on here, the basis on.
Well, we wouldn't have been approved for the audit.
Well, we, we don't have any audit report. The council has not received any audit report at all. So, so that's what, I will direct it to Anthony to see once what the auditor has come up with on there.
Well, I'm sure we have.
Do I have email from the show?
Right, we can just forward an email to you.
The auditor.
Well, doesn't, well, last year I remember asking that question and I was told that both come at the same time. We don't get one or the other, so that's probably why we don't have it.
Right, right.
We can forward our email to you tomorrow that the audit is complete. If that's what you want to see, then that's easy enough to do.
Well, if we have questions, we need to talk to the auditor. So, so you can forward the email, that's fine.
Okay.
So, so the, the other question was the gym equipment for the new high school?
Yes.
Which I see the invoices or the, the purchase orders. So the, the question becomes, why did this not go through the project?
As I said to you before, that it was eliminated, and you have that, and it was highlighted from F and F. So then we purchased it in two separate payments, one out of the general fund and one out of the 25 account, so that we would have weight equipment in a new building for a year. And we got it in December because it had to be ordered. That was the decision because it was removed, it was cut out, and I sent you that from the architect.
I have that.
And highlighted, right.
And that email from the architect says that, that permanent project building committee.
They reduced the FFNE, so it was reduced, right.
Correct, but you could come back because of budgetary things, but you could come back.
We, we had the money, we had the money, and we did not want the students to go another year without having a facility. So we purchased new equipment and it's, it's in place and it's being actively used. So we, we would, we would have an empty room for a year. I mean, and we weren't going to move old equipment that's 35 years old.
Scott, can you stop talking, talking over the mayor and just let her speak? And then when she's done speaking, you speak, please?
Oh.
Thank you.
I thought it was the feedback in the microphone.
So, so the, the question became that those invoices, I know you ordered them last year and that's fine, but if they were submitted to the project and went to the project and was paid out of the project on there.
That FFNE was reduced, that's why we did it.
But, but then that money, instead of coming out of your budget or account 25, would stay there. It would be.
We were told to spend the 25 account down to zero. We ventured all of this, we were directed to spend it down, which we did.
Well, well, I did not, I did not see any motion in the Board of Ed minutes to authorize you to spend down to $5. So I'm not, I'm not arguing that point. I'm talking about the equipment and having it go through the project. And whether it gets reimbursed by the state or not approved, that's not the point. The point is if it goes through the project, it doesn't come out of your operating budget and that money is allowable to go into the 2% fund, into your account 25.
That was spent in June. That money was spent in June for that equipment before July 1. So we were under the direction to spend it down. That's where the money came for the storage building as well. We had two major projects that we wanted for the students. We wanted the weight room, we only wanted the building of the storage shed in that. That's where that money went. And we've said this multiple times. So I, we, we're going over and over and over, but we already, you know where we got the money, you know what fund it came from, you know what we purchased with it, and that's how we did it. And I can't say it any different way because that's, we've said it the same way every time.
Well, I'm just.
That's what we purchased.
I was at that meeting at the building, at that meeting that Monday night where they eliminated the gym equipment. They eliminated the building equipment.
Right, and I have the email from Rusty that says that they could come back.
I don't remember that.
It was February?
Yeah, I was at that meeting that night and they eliminated the gym equipment.
That they could come back for, for the cost of the gym.
I don't remember Rusty saying that, I'm sorry. That I don't remember, I just remember that at that particular meeting they eliminated.
And we weren't going to move 35-year-old equipment either. So.
And that's the limit.
If it's operational, you should have moved it back. I mean, I mean, that's, that's ridiculous. It was good enough to go over to silly putty factory and work on it.
Surely not.
Well, then, then we, it's in danger of working on it.
No, we had it appraised. When you take it apart for a third time, you can read the cover letter and you can see that the person who set the police station up and who did our weight room, the cover letter is right there with photographs of the old equipment, everything that you're speaking to. It's of zero value because of the age of it. It's been taken apart three times. If you move it four times, it becomes compromised. It's outdated, it served its purpose in the warehouse for the students in the summertime and during that year to have a place to go and, and exercise.
Is it still at the warehouse?
It's allowed.
Is it still at the warehouse?
It's still sitting there.
Are we, we're not, are we paying for anything?
We're not paying anything. Now, I want you to go through and look, it was purchased through a donation originally from Rick Jeremiah, who was a retired teacher at the second page. It was the Rick Jeremiah Junior Proctor and Gamble Take It To The House contest winner and was being a huge New York Jets fan. They flew him to Hawaii and then they gave him $1,000. And then he donated that gym equipment to us back in 2010. Also, the Ed Foundation donated $2,700. And a number of those pieces were from the Touchdown Club. And Mark Basil, at the post at the time, gave that equipment to us. So, you know, that's how we put everything together. When I bought the equipment, it was 10 years old, 15 years ago. And it clearly states that, that 25-year-old equipment that's been moved two to three times, disassembled, reassembled, it's now outdated, it's like a 25-year-old box.
So we're scrapping that now?
We're sitting there. It was inventory. It, it's not worth anything.
You basically should have scrapped it, right? It shouldn't be stored.
Yeah, it's worth the scrap.
Yeah, it's worth, because it's unsafe to use, so scrap it.
There's pictures of the new equipment and the old equipment.
Just before you say scrap.
Hey Scott, as far as.
There is a process for town assets to get rid of.
As far as the plates, those are probably stuffed or something, right, or no?
Yeah.
I know, I, I get that, I'm just saying.
Just Mark permission.
I'll take it.
But you had, you did have inventory of Kate Clumbo and John Florias.
Yes, yes, I saw, I.
I found out about that, yes.
Yes, I, well.
I, I didn't know about it until I got a call from the warehouse that you guys.
Well, they, they supposedly, permanent project told us that they were taking an inventory of the equipment before it went over to silly putty. So that's what, that's when I'm assuming that it was done.
I was just finding out because they called me.
I don't know.
There were people looking for it.
So, so, but it's, the, the reason it was asked is because the budget, the audit was not complete at the, our, I know our audit is not done. And it has been stated a number of times at the Board of Ed, meaning that your audit wasn't done either. So it was news to me tonight.
My audit was done in December.
No, but, but.
Done, it's been done.
I know, but the board has asked several meetings that I was there, January, February, the comment was made that they didn't know how much was going into account 25 for you because the audit wasn't done.
Your audit, your audit, your audit, we're waiting for you to say how much is coming back to us.
Right, but that.
Our, our part is done. Your part will then dictate how much we're getting back in 25.
Well, that's where the whole thing, you already know that you're getting at least $461,000.
We don't know that, you told us that.
Well, no, you issued the PO.
We, we don't know what we're getting back. Until you finalize your audit, then you're going to confirm what it is.
But you, you issued a purchase order and encumbered $461,000 out of last year's budget. So you know that you're getting at least that amount back, if not more, that you're getting that much because you encumbered it on there. So you know that you have at least that much going into the 2% account.
Right.
On there. So you, you do know that you have, there could be more and that's.
We heard two different numbers, right? So.
Well, that, that was the PO that you issued, so you know that's for sure.
It would have been higher too, right? Than the 473, I think it was.
Yeah, there's still a couple items over time.
Or outstanding. So we, we didn't know. It was 473, hopefully 616 or something like that, something.
Yeah, well, that's why I was asking on the equipment because if you put it in the project, you could get the money from the project to go into your account 25.
And pay for some of that at 25. And general fund, so I, I took that at 25, the first initial purchase.
I didn't know that. I only saw the purchase order for the 80,000.
We said it a couple of times. That we, we took the first, the first one out of 25 because we were spending it down.
So, so that is where that came from, along with the, the building, the, the money that was encumbered for the.
80,000 for the storage building.
Right.
And we have that on New Year in April with the whole budget John Florias prepared to go with everything.
Okay, so just let me finish before I, before you keep interrupting, is you had money in, you had money coming from another account that was going to pay for the athletic storage building, which is fine on there, but it was the, but it was encumbered out of your operating budget. And the money was coming from another account on there.
I don't understand what you're saying.
No, those, the four purchase orders for the athletic storage building are in the general fund and that's where the purchase orders are encumbered to. Nothing was encumbered for Fund 25 for the storage building.
No, I didn't say Fund 25. According to the document that was sent from your office to reconcile with Anthony on the monthly expenditures, there was a receivable for $73,500 from food service.
Yeah, cafeteria.
Right, the savings and insurance, which is what Scott explained to us in July when he came and asked about it. So that money is in addition to the money that was allocated from the town in your 2324 budget. It was, that was in addition.
That, that amount was credited to our health insurance line, which in turn increased our bottom line. And that's how we were able to cut those four purchase orders out of the general fund prior to the fiscal year-end close.
Well, according to the statement that I have that was given to Anthony from your office shows the 735.
Yeah, so the 735 came. Yeah, seventy-three five came from the cafeteria, if that is correct. And that cafeteria check is credited to our health insurance line, which in turn increases our bottom line available. And then that's how we did the four purchase orders out of the general fund prior to the end of the fiscal year.
So we'll just talk to the auditor rather than, well, because we don't, we don't, we don't have any information from the auditor in regards to this. So we'll just wait and see once what they say because that money then could, depending on how it's explained to us, there's a possibility it looked like you were encumbering money that was coming into the account. So it would be like a double encumbrance on it because it was money that we didn't buy. They were taking it from food service, which is fine, coming over. So it's not in their operating budget. But we'll talk to the auditor and get it straightened out and see once because it's potentially money that could go into the account twenty-five, as you call it, on there. So, so we have a lot of meetings to get before April twenty-second because that's when we're finalizing the budget. Does anyone have any other questions?
I have different questions.
That's fine.
I would like to ask Carter some questions if I could. Okay, um, I realize that seventy-five percent of the budget is already covered in terms of salary and benefit. But being a former educator and actually still involved in education, I was kind of taken aback when I looked at the amounts that you have in the budget in terms of teaching and learning. And that most of them, there's no increase. But you do have an increase in math. I'm just curious as to, you know, why math, special ed, and athletics? That's about it. What, how are you, how do you manage to do that without, you know, with new information coming out? And you cannot increase any of those other areas? Or is math like your focus for the year?
Math hasn't increased for some instructional supplies and materials that we're using. We try to balance all curriculum areas with the tight budget. Some years, the language arts is, is a half-year expense. It depends on the curriculum implementation model. During the implementation, there's a heavier investment in the new materials and programming. So that's usually why you see the discrepancies between those, like science, social studies, math, language arts. But there, you know, there's a significant reduction over the, this budget recommendation in the teaching and learning accounts.
So you're comfortable with what you have in there?
I mean, we'd like more, but we know we're not going to get it.
Um, what, what was the high dosage tutoring grant? It was for one year. What exactly was that? Was that only a one-year grant?
That was a one-year grant and it even ran short of the full year. The state ended up cutting it short. So we had, we had put in for a larger grant, but they extended it quicker. So what it was for is six through eight math supporting students. It's called high dosage tutoring. So it's a model that allowed us to hire tutors to work in small groups, supporting kids who are not at standard specific to math. We showed really good results. We were positive, but the funding dried up and we had to let go of the employees.
Well, and when you had the N A S C evaluation, what, were there recommendations for you in that, for the high school in terms of the academics?
Yeah, they had a lot of recommendations around kind of the curriculum improvement and linking our curriculum documents with the vision of the graduates and kind of the K ball segments. And that's recommendations specific to the high school, digging a little bit deeper into what the curriculum maps look like in university. And the high school did a great job and received commendations on that work.
I'm sure they did. And you guys did very well with the A P exams. Um, what? Someone's bothering me here. I guess it's right. How many educational coaches do you still have?
We have two. So we have one math, one language arts, K five only.
Only K five?
Yeah. We'd love to have more of that too, but, you know, it's a tough, tough budget.
In terms of the S B A C test, how are you guys doing with those?
Um, I mean, we present that every year to the Board. So we're, we're up and down. We have some real great areas of strength. We have some areas that we continue to work on. And we try to do that in a balanced way. None of our efforts are laser focused on just improving test scores. And we're trying to improve instructional role from our teaching staff, but also the way students problem solve and think is a big focus. And figure if we attack that, we'll continue to improve the test scores.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your answering my questions. I just was concerned when I saw there's very little increase in the area of teaching and learning, but I see that you have such a large percentage in terms of salary and benefits. But I also think of teachers as being part of teaching and learning.
As do I. And that's our most important part, really, is that's the backbone.
And I guess my other question will be for Sarah. How do you account for the fact that you might get additional kids in like, say during the spring or in the summer that need outplacement or that you need special services? Do you have it a contingency account? How do you manage to be able to accommodate?
All of the unexpected things. Yeah, and it happens all the time. I get emails, you know, random days where we have students who might be moving in or students who are maybe in foster care that are close to North Frankfurt. And wherever they come from, whatever their educational needs are, we're responsible for. We plan according to what we know is going to happen. And that's where excess cost comes into play. And so the excess costs that we receive is for the year that we're having those expenses. And so if we get a student, right now, we have nine students who, who we're able to account for under excess cost. But if we get a student who's currently outplaced, the likelihood of that student qualifying under excess cost is pretty high just based on what current tuition rates are. Historically, we used to have students who were outplaced that still didn't meet that threshold. All of our outplaced students meet that threshold now because tuition has gone through the roof. So we, we plan for what we know is coming. We don't build in those buffers for replacements because just as likely as we might have a student move in, we also might have a student that moves out. And we constantly have plans for returning students to district when we think that they're ready. Students who might be graduating or aging out. So those are all possibilities that we, it's kind of a moving target. But we do, we do our best with what we have. And again, that's the benefit of the excess cost.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you for allowing me to ask such questions. Yeah, no problem. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, so now we're going to go on to capital. So, um, I know Public Works revamped their, um, capital request. So in, in the easiest way to see it, because I didn't see a page in our binder or what was sent to us, is in the book, is in this book on capital. So right now, equipment reserve for Public Works, the original budget was five hundred and forty-eight thousand. And, um, there was an update to that, that the town manager had sent to us, which brought it down to three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, I believe.
That's right.
Three seventy-nine.
Or three seventy-nine, okay. Branny, do you want to come up, please? And just, um, kind of go through and say, no, there's, you know, things have changed in regards to. Okay, so do you want to just walk, I don't know.
All right, so, so the, the first lease payment you see at the top, you know, that's, that's our last payment on the truck that we just received, uh, just before winter. We put in, we lost two trucks over, before the winter started. Two, two, two out of service, cracked frames. So they're, they're dead in the water. So we have, we're putting one large truck. And then, like Danny said before, there's two, the one, those, the, and then that truck is a hundred and fifty thousand. And then we're buying one truck to replace two trucks. Now, I know you have to believe this, but the other night before we got to this meeting, we lost another truck, another engine. So now we're down four trucks. So the, Danny and I were talking that maybe we should, we could push out this, take the third truck and split, do a three-year lease instead of a two-year lease. And then, um, we're going to try to replace the engine. We're going to see how this year ends up and do the work ourselves, just to get that truck back on the road. So we're going to end up redoing it. That's going to be about between twelve and fifteen thousand because we're going to end up having to take the cab off a bit. So we might as well just, you know, rebuild the truck back to, so it's going to last a few years.
What year is that, Branny?
Uh, twenty thirteen, thirteen, twenty thirteen.
How many miles on it?
Around a hundred or so.
Thank you.
So we have to pull the cab off. So we need all the cab mounts and everything. So. So we're in pickle, unfortunately.
How long does it take to rebuild?
That truck there? It'll probably be, I would say it's going to be three months.
So you've done a truck for three months?
Oh, yeah. Well, right now, we're down one, two, if that's two grounds trucks. So one truck eighty-eight, that's, that's done. And that's truck twenty. So they're down two trucks. And the highway's down, two, right? Yeah, yeah, two.
Eighty-eight wasn't all the ambulance, so it's on its second life already.
So when you rebuild this, do you go out and get a, you rebuild the engine?
No.
You replace the engine?
Yeah.
So it's a diesel, right?
Uh, no, that's a gas job. So we'll do that now.
And that's like fifteen to twenty-five?
The motor's around nine. And then all the incidentals that's going to have to, because I'm sure a month or all that's going to have to be changed. All the cab mounts are going to have to be changed. Radiator's going to probably have to be changed.
Branny, is that like a plow truck or is that like a mason dump?
That's, well, that's a mason dump, but it is a plow truck.
Okay.
Everything we have is plowed.
So after this is done, what do you estimate the life of the truck now?
The motor?
Yeah, what's the life of it, what I'm saying?
Five to ten years, penny quarter bet. New truck's a little over a hundred thousand dollars. So at this point, I'd say it'd be in.
Branny, is there anything you can get from the state that told you over?
I already have two.
Oh, yeah, right.
I mean, anything we get from the state is, is, they're, they're replaced for a reason. We bought one this year when the other two trucks went down. We bought an old truck just to get it as a spare truck. That it actually worked out because we needed it. So, you know, you, you're talking, these trucks that were replaced, mind you, they're, we're talking nineteen eighty-eight and nineteen ninety-four again?
Yeah.
Something like that. I mean, we, we did well. If you think about how, how old the trucks are in the salt and, and, and the use that they get, we use, our stuff gets used. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's.
Now, I was just wondering, you know, in the interim, while you're down so many trucks.
Well, it's a good time for the year to beat down. I mean, even though we're doing the construction now, but, you know, stuff is coming in to get serviced. But we're going to be hurting on the grounds end of it because, like you said, that's two of their vehicles are gone. And one truck, we put money, the eighty-eight, we put money into it. I mean, we're dumping good money into it. And we got no results, to be honest with you. And it was, we wasted money.
So he can, so you can, well, by fixing the one truck, putting the new engine in, spending between twelve or fifteen thousand dollars.
I'm going to try to do that out of this year. I gotta wait to do, it's kind of happening, it's going to happen in June. We're going to, you know, the entity's going to be involved. We're going to be closing out our accounts. And if we could dig up money just to pay for the, at least, at least get the engine part. And then the following year, if there's other miscellaneous parts, we could, we could take it out of the maintenance account.
Okay.
That's if we can get, you know, I, I can't tell you if there's money there or not. It's either going to be in this year or it's going to be in next year. You know, it's going to be out of the maintenance account, whatever we do.
Or the, the other option, if we, if we wanted him to start working on it now, is we could give him the authorization to go ahead and take it out of contingency. So that he can.
That's good.
To, so that he can start working on it and we don't have to.
I mean, I could, I could start, I mean, I could really start it. But again, if I don't have the, at the end of the year, if I don't balance out, then then we'd have to go to contingency because I'm going to have a hundred and fifteen thousand. And again, I don't know until, you know, next, you know, we're talking the end of May, June, when, when you can really see what's going to be left for the budget, once I.
But if we commit to contingency now on it, then he can, you can definitely go ahead and just get it done.
You can get the motor, right? You buy the motor.
Right. So.
And the rest of the truck is solid? I mean.
Yeah, it's in, it's in decent shape. I mean, it's, it's an older truck. But again, you know, you're talking, like Danny says, a hundred, it's probably going to be a hundred, ten thousand by the time you dress a truck like that.
Because the only thing that worries.
Plow, the plows, you know, the days of the plows being a five thousand or, for those trucks too, they're, they're up to ten. The big trucks are over sixteen thousand now, just for a plow.
So the only thing that worries me, and I'm sure you wouldn't be even offering this if this wasn't the case, but, you know, you talked about some other trucks having cracked frames and they're, they're toast now. I just, I would hate to see us approve this money. You guys do all that work. And then something like that happens to this truck. And then, but you're saying, you're saying the frame's solid, the rest of it's.
Yeah, it's solid. I mean, again, I don't want to drink myself, but, you know, the transmission could go after. Yeah, that, that'll be the next thing, you know? It's just like this eighty-eight truck. We just spent quite a bit of money over, over this year on it. And we didn't get our money back out of it. That's why we decided to park because.
Okay, so.
So everything's on a three, everything's on a three-year lease except for the, that, the twenty-nine thirty-two. I did a two-year lease on that, but we can bump that out to three years. It, it softens the blow a little bit on the.
Well, well, then, as presented with the two-year lease, from what was presented to us in the, in the, in the budget, he was, Public Works was originally five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And with the revisions Branny made, has made, it's down to three seventy-nine. So that's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. But that money was coming out of the fund balance to begin with. So it doesn't have an effect on to the mill rate at all because it's coming out of fund balance. But with that savings, I think we need to have the discussion, and you can think about it, or you can do that at the next meeting, is we need to start a capital reserve fund for vehicles.
So we're not getting hit with it.
And to put some of this money, some of this savings into the capital reserve.
We need to do that for both garage as well as fire department so that it's not.
Well, it's, it's one account.
Yeah, I'm saying, no, that we're feeding two different entities.
And we had that, we, what, two years ago.
Haven't you seen, it makes sense to do. It's just something that we need to do so that it's not always going to be such a bad.
And the only issue that happens here, you know, because we kicked the roadside mower out another year again. But next year, you got a weird, what you see on this page, except for the first, the first one oh five is, is the lease. So it's going to come back. It's coming back for the next three years.
Right.
I have a roadside mower. You have one now, the roadside mower that's getting older?
I'm sorry.
You have a roadside mower that's getting older?
Yeah. Well, both of them. My, my other one's ninety-five. And the other one is a, is one that we bought from the state, actually.
We might have to get you sheep or something.
So one of the other things that came up in our budget workshops is the curbing and sidewalk at the Edward Smith Library for sixty thousand dollars, which is.
um, for sixty thousand dollars, which is not in, it's not proposed, it didn't come through on the manager, and I really think that that is something we need. It's a safety.
A safety issue.
As far as I'm concerned, it's a safety issue and concern, and, so, you know, we, we have some savings from Public Works, and, and since it's fund balance, I think we should use it and should go to, um, the sidewalk, um, at the library. And, then, the other thing is, um, for the Board of Education. Last year, when we talked, um, about their plans in, in, on their capital, um, there was a big subject on paving, and they got, we got recent costs that were sent to us after our, um, March twenty-fifth meeting with them. The approved budget for the Board of Education, the number one priority was paving Jerome Harrison and T B E S. And, um, we were told last year that it could be split up over three years on there. So, I would like to see some, um, paid, it's, it's definitely maintenance of the schools, and we need to do that. Um, and some of the areas are safety areas too, the, the Board of Education can pick what areas first. The, the only issue that, and I don't know how much we wanna commit to it, is that there's, um, the quotes that we received, um, from this year that were just done, um, total five hundred and twelve thousand dollars for both of the schools. So, we divide that up over three years, there is a little bit of a cost, because there will be cost increases as you go along. But, we need to start that project. And last year, we talked about doing, going on a three-year paving plan, and coordinating it with Public Works, to, so that we have it, you know, when Tilcon is here, or whoever paving, it's, at the same time, the equipment is in town, here, so that we can.
So, we're gonna do a third of it now, we'll do a third this year, a third next year, and a third, third year?
We started a little.
Public Works manage that project, or?
They did.
Public Works manages that project?
Other than.
Who manages that project?
We can send it to Permanent Project Building Committee, because that's what we've been doing, and they coordinate with, um, Franny. And the school would have to let us know what their areas, which, what are their priorities in a, in a three-year project? What would be their priorities? Now, on the, the Board of Ed, the capital budget that was approved by the Board of Ed, I'm not exactly sure where that number came from, because they had a cost of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. But, the, the quotes that were sent to us total five hundred and twelve thousand.
So, the question is, so the question, my question is, the paving's in the Board of Education budget?
It's not, it's in cap.
Capital.
Capital, oh.
It would be in capital.
Okay.
So, Rose, what's not in, in that, like at Jerome Harrison, it was never figured curving, and, and it needs to be done the front, the, the front. You know, that's another, another thing that, you know, we talked, sort of blew in the face about this, but that busway should be granite curving. We're spending money on, we're, these things aren't that old, and you look at Stan, uh, T B E S, that school, when it was built, and that curving in front of that building is still pristine, and we keep putting, uh, concrete curving in it, it, we keep have to repair it, it's, it's a wreck. Look at this building, you know, coming in here, it's just, it just.
I, I, I personally don't have a problem with that.
The library's another one.
Right.
We're spending, we're, they're.
We discussed the library doing that, putting in granite curving for that reason, because it's such a tight spot for you to come in with your plows.
It, it is one money, but it, it lasts.
What's it like, double Franny, or what's the percentage?
I don't think it's double, I mean, I, I don't wanna give, I don't give the numbers unless I, but it's not double, I don't think it's double. But, again, you know, and I will say this, T B E S, it, it, we have to, we, we have a patch that has to be done there this year. The whole, the, the, the east side of that parking lot, I think it's east side, right? Or, the, the side that's facing the, uh, firehouse is, it's crumbled, I mean, there, there's nothing there.
The front end, or the, where the map was?
No, no, the front, not where the map is, it, in the parking lot. And, you know, so whether, I don't know, and I'll talk, be happy to talk with John and, and, and the superintendent to figure out, you know, where you wanna go. Do you wanna go down to Jerome Harrison and pave, or we, should we go up there and, and pave?
So that.
They both need to be done.
Yeah, well, here, according to these quotes from March of twenty-five that were sent to us, I don't know, I'm assuming they were done recently. T B S is at a cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand. There was no map, so I'm, I don't know if that's just one section or not. Jerome Harrison is two, is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, but it was divided into three separate sections.
Right, well, you know, I gotta say this, you, I would not do it in patchwork.
No.
Because what, you, you, once they get there, who's ever doing the paving, it, it's, it's, it's gonna cost you a lot more money. We're gonna keep paying fees for bringing in equipment, so when we come in here, you'll, you'll see it when we do the high school, we're gonna do all that repair work in the high school. We're gonna rip, you know, it's all, it's all there, we're gonna rip it out and pave it, we're gonna start June fifteenth.
Right.
You know, and by, uh, two weeks, it'll be like new.
Okay. Um, so, I, I'm, you know, this, for T B S, I'm not sure, I just have the cost here, I don't know if this is, I don't think it's patchwork, but I'm not sure this, um.
Who pulled that quote? Tom, is that John?
John, is that, is that our, our, oh, John, you remember John? That's, that quote, remember that?
For T B S.
So, so those are quotes that we got a year or two ago.
The number of twenty-five?
Yeah, they were updated in March, they just redid their statement July one, so, it's probably going up, there's escalation. T B S, that's probably a valid quote, quote, to pave the whole place and do the asphalt curving, because the granite is in place since nineteen sixty, and it's fine. J H S, that, I wouldn't go by that price, because there's a lot of concrete curving that has to be done, should be swapped to granite for longevity purposes, so. If you want a, a shelf-ready project, I would go with T B S.
When you're looking at the granite curving, are you talking just the curving that's on the school side, we're not talking about interior curving, on, you know, the turnaround, bus turnaround, just the school facing?
We're mostly.
Then you're gonna do an asphalt curving on everything else?
Asphalt out in the lots.
All the way going out.
Do a J H S in the parking lot, get rid of all that concrete out in the lots, and just do it as asphalt.
Okay.
Okay, so, so right now, there's currently two hundred and fifty thousand, um, for a capital project under education, so we can just reallocate, if we wanna keep that two hundred and fifty thousand, just reallocate it for paving, and the Board of Ed can decide where they want the paving. With Franny, they can talk to Franny and decide where they want to have that done. So, we can keep the number.
Should we get the number for the granite curving as well, and try to, I mean, I'm assuming if we're gonna.
Well, this isn't the whole project.
Yeah, but the curving has to come in at the same time, isn't it?
Not, not for T B S, T B S, T B S doesn't need it.
No, that one's already done, we already have, that's been done since nineteen sixty, for J H S.
I think that's all she's talking about right now, is that.
Yeah.
We do one project, just one bunch.
It depends on what they wanna do with their, to, how, how they wanna divide it. Jerome Harrison, the pictures on here were divided into three sections. T B S, I think, is just the one, that whole parking area that.
So, Jerome is, is the bus drop-off in the long drive? The kids' drop-off area, parents' drop-off in the backside where the preschool is?
Right, here's the math for Jerome Harrison. So, if it's section, I mean, section three is the back, so if it's according to the number, if it's one, two, three as priorities, section three, which is the back, is the third priority. The first priority is green, is the, the turnaround in the long driveway, the bus turnaround, that's, that is.
Cause this, the backside here had partial pavement, because they, they extended it, they widened it, which was an absolutely necessary project.
Right, so, the, at Jerome Harrison, it's the bus entrance, the long driveway, the turnaround is area one. Area two is on the other side, um, like where staff park, and it's parent pickup is in that parking lot. And area three is the back of the school. So, the green section, which is the main, this cost was a hundred and twenty thousand roughly, this does not include granite curving though. That's just the, the paving. So, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's in the budget right now, so we just have to decide. Um, and we can think about it, we can just decide when we finalize the budget on the twenty-second. And that will give them time to talk with Franny to prioritize where they want to have it done.
Franny did indicate that it makes sense to do one whole location, so we're not bringing in machinery twice over in ten, ten.
Yeah, I mean, Jerome, Jerome's gonna get, that's a, that's a, the curving there is gonna be an issue, so that's, that's gonna, that, that's gonna be more, a lot more money. The sad thing is, it's the second time around too, in, in my career, paving lots, including high school, so.
Could we do all of Jerome with the granite curving, and then just patch T B S, or is that gonna create a lot?
Well, he didn't wanna patch T B S, he said.
Well, I'm saying, T B S, you're just gonna do it now. Either way, you have to patch T B S, it's got the students, T B S, granite's already there.
Yeah, we're gonna, I mean.
T B S is gonna be the cheapest one, uh, cheaper one to do, if you, if.
And you can get the whole project done at once, because it's just, there's no granite curving in there, it's just the asphalt.
It's too nice to just do that one now.
And, and, and then Jerome, Jerome, we, we can look at it, and look at the granite, and then all that work will be done before they grind it up, and, you know, that's next, the following year's project. I mean, we, I go with John, and we'll go and look at the, and Danny'll look at both the schools, and, but either way, if you don't do it, you have to do the patch at T B S no matter what, because it's like gravel.
Well, then, to do a patch, to me, is throwing money away, to do a patch and not.
We're gonna end up replating it, and then having to put it back in there anyway, which.
But, it, 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 it doesn't go away, if you just put that patch in there, or next year, when you grind it up, it's part of the base.
Correct.
But, you know, we'd rather just do the whole thing, because we're there.
Right. Okay.
It costs money to make the stuff around that, but yeah, that.
Okay, so if you can talk to John and, and see once what their priority, and Scott, and see what their priorities are, but we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget right now, um, so we can just allocate that to, to paving. It's not gonna change any, it won't change any, the way it is on here.
One last question, Franny? Franny, um, do we have a paving machine in town?
No.
Do other towns, many other towns have their own paving machines that actually do some of the paving?
Some do, years ago, they used to have it. It's a very expensive machine to have, and you have to have a very big crew. It's not like you're bringing two guys out there, or four guys, it's, it's a, it's a, it's like, my, our whole crew would be out here.
Not saying that we'd need a crew, but if we had a machine, and, uh, we could do our own small jobs, I mean, it's a whole other project, but.
You can rent it.
Is that, is that something we consider doing, or is not even with?
We've done it in the past, we've done small patches, we even done, done a lot of roads ourselves. But at the end of, at the, honestly, at the end of the day, it's cheaper to have somebody come in and do it, because.
Answers my question right there, I was thinking, you know, if it was something that wasn't a lot of money, do we just have that machine, so we have a really bad area? We could take care of it this week.
Yeah, we could do that, I could rent the machine, and yeah, we could do that, but, the end of the day, there's something else not getting done.
Cause it sounds like we have a few spots that need to be, like, done, like, now. All right, thank you, Franny.
Jeff knows, I mean, Jeff, Jeff's road is being done, he, you know, asking how big an approval is down there, I mean, it's a major operation.
It's a, they have a, you know, it's, you don't realize how much equipment we can bring in, to do that, I mean, it's not just a.
I'm not talking doing roads and whole park lots, I'm just thinking if we had to do a, you know?
I mean, if you had to do like a small patch, I'm sure they could get the asphalt, and then, you know, shovel it in, and you can get a roller, you're not gonna lay it down, you know, one of the replating machines. Those machines do more than that, they do the replay, and they chop.
Labor-wise, I could call a contractor in, that, that local guy had come down there, they'll be in and out of there within an hour for T B S. And our crew, we'd probably be there for over half the day, because we.
With a bunch of equipment that we have to buy.
You know, we'd have to set our crew up to go do it.
Yeah.
So, the, the time, the labor wasted, it's not worth it.
Yeah.
That's why we got out of doing it, it's just a lot.
It makes sense.
But, I mean, if we have these three projects, if we picked the one, it sounds to me like even the other two, though, there's actually safety issues for the kids. We have curbs, we got holes, so we're gonna have to do the one, but at the same time, we're gonna need to, because we're not gonna do anything until next year on the next one, we might have to spend a little bit of money and patch up.
I mean, I'll, I'll have a pay for a J H S.
You know, we gotta get one done and get the other two safe.
Right.
Right?
Okay.
And we, and library also has to be, that's, that's a tricky task for you.
Right, so the sidewalk, that, yeah, so, is there a way you can get us, um, because we wanna get granite curving at the library? And the, the estimate that's in here, I don't know that that was granite curving.
Yeah, I think it was.
Was it?
Was it as an alternate? But I believe the suggestion is sixty thousand to be granite.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
She said yes.
Yes, Lauren, that was a.
Yes, it does have with the granite.
Okay, so, okay, so, we aren't gonna make the decision tonight, but just think, cause when we finalize this, so we can take sixty thousand from the hundred and sixty-nine thousand savings from Franny's, and, and, um, took, put it towards the sidewalks at the, at the Smith Library on there.
When does Smith Library go offline for each month?
We're still, what's the status?
We have not even been notified about the grant status yet, so we haven't had a ruling on that.
So, we can't wait until then to do it?
Well, but, do we, I thought it was, we already approved it in the C I P, and it was, because it's not in this C I P, so we already approved it, so it doesn't matter how much we get on the grant, we already approved the C I P, in the C I P plan, for a million dollars.
Million dollars.
Right?
Yeah, that's true.
A million dollars is in the C I P from last year, the auction was one point eight, you were applying for the million dollar grant, Steve Grant. So, you might only need eight hundred thousand out of the million if the Steve Grant comes through.
Can we do a one point eight, we approved a one point eight, just for the.
That, just for the purpose of.
Yeah, for the purpose of the getting.
Right, right. Right, so we're waiting to hear, but they can still, they could still start planning for, because it has to get done, so they can, the Permanent Project Building Committee can start talking about it and planning to see once what the, and get quotes on the plan.
That they can do, they just can't start the work yet.
Correct, but they can do the preliminary stuff in regards to it.
Do we have an idea, idea when that type of decision will be made with the Steve Grant?
It's supposed to be this month.
It's this month?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so they can start the other work, I, I mean, start the planning phase of it, also.
And then we would look to possibly coincide the granite and the sidewalk with that of that, to, to do at the same time, because you're gonna be offline, so I've got people going in.
Right, I mean, I would think that the minimum of three months, but it could be longer.
Well, the, and, because the other thing, as far as sidewalks goes, Permanent Project is also looking to do the sidewalks at the middle school, as part of that project. So, if we can coordinate, if it's the same contractor, when they get the cost, to do.
They're gonna put the sidewalks in the middle school in the same project as the library?
Well, not the same project, but at the same time, under the same, at the same timeframe, if you have the same contractor, you might save some money.
So, then why don't we put that same one in effect for other years to be curving, right, or does that not make sense?
Well, that, there's actual, the, at N B I S, I don't know if it's curving, or if it's the actual sidewalks.
It's, it's, uh, well, N B I S, we downsized the job, uh, from original plan, so, the front, the front main entrance that faces north. Yeah, north, that's gonna get granite curving and sidewalks, uh.
So, we're talking about the same thing, I, I'm a big fan of economies of scale, so if you can get, if you could loop everything in and look for a bid that brings in economies of scale, because they're doing all this work, carrying fuel, excellent work.
Right, it's just, it's two different projects, cost-wise, but yes, that's the whole idea, is to do. Right, it's just, it's two different projects, cost-wise, but yes, that's the whole idea, is to do them.
Should be our goal for.
At the same, at the same time. Because the MBIS would go under the bonded project, and I know we have to make a little bit of change to the, that bond resolution. Yeah, but to get that done, so that project is completely done on there.
If you have both jobs lined up, they'll just go from one to the other.
Right.
Which makes sense to do.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna, we're gonna add on the capital, we're adding the Smith Library. On the Board of Education, we're moving the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to paving on there, and.
Were you moving, did you say?
We're, well, it's moving from the TBS gym HVAC to paving. So, there's, right now, there's two hundred and fifty thousand for the HVAC at TBS.
Gotcha.
And we're just gonna move that two fifty to the paving, under education.
But the floor was the concern, the new floor.
I don't saw it, because of the humidity.
But, so, so the, the repair to the TBS floor, from my understanding, was not due to humidity. It was due to a water leak that got in there, and.
That's what caused the damage to replace it, but you need to maintain a proper environment, maintain that gym floor. Just like you have to maintain a proper environment in your new high school to maintain that gym floor.
Right.
So, if the building builds humidity, which that building does, you risk ruining your fifty thousand dollar gym floor.
And, and that school also did not, that floor was in there for fifty years from when the school was, was built. So, if we have to delay putting in air conditioning a few years to get the paving done, to do it, the other floor, in my mind, anyone who's out in regards to it, their thought process on it. But the original floor was in there for forty-five to fifty years without air conditioning. And I think, what is it, TBS.
Oh, TBS, I thought you were talking about Jerome Harrison.
No, no, that's not a wood floor at Jerome.
But John, the, John, the floor, the floor is not, it's not leaking anymore, the building's not leaking anymore though, right?
No.
Right, that was fixed, and then the floor was fixed.
It was common from outside.
Yeah.
Problem's been solved. That's why you had to replace the floor. It was insurance, it was an insurance claim, insurance coming to pay for the floor. But you wanted to maintain the floor.
Is that floor different than the old floor?
No, it's the same type of floor, it's a different type of installation, they don't use the old style installation now. Use different style installations on gym floors now. They're more of a floating floor than a permanent, than a dom floor. Helps with sports injuries and stuff like that, to have the floor, so the floor moves.
So, there's gaps where moisture can get trapped, and potentially make it more humid.
When they install the floors, now they put plastic strips, every, every six rows, they put a plastic expansion strip, so the floor could move to the environment.
Before we seal it.
You need to maintain the proper environment to maintain the floor from buckling or moving or heaving or. Just like during high school, we went through hours and hours of arguments in Permanent Project about maintaining the proper environment for the gym floor.
When this floor is installed, John, is there a recommendation for the, for the environment?
Yeah, there is.
Did they actually give you a paper of a recommendation for the environment and support?
There, I'm, I'm sure in our warranty for the floor, it's written in there somewhere.
Will you provide that to us?
Yeah, we'll take a look at the warranty they gave us.
John, the floating floor that you have in there, is that kinda like the ones that people are putting in their houses? Now, I'm sure it's not the same exact kind, but I know there's ones that, for your house, you can buy, you know, different grades, but there's some that are basically waterproof, where moisture does not affect them. If you can buy the better quality one, it does not affect it at all.
Oh, it's that.
Does it have that type of floor, where it's waterproof?
It's actually a maple gym floor, just like any other gymnasium.
So, it's not one of those, you're thinking like.
No, it's not, no, it's actually, it's the, the way it's installed under the floor, is the, the old, the old floor was installed, it had tracks embedded in the concrete. And they permanently attached the floor to the tracks. So, you basically had a wood floor on top of concrete. Now, they put what they call a sleeper system underneath the floor, so the floor moves, has a little bit more cushion to it. But it's still a maple gymnasium floor.
Is there moisture?
The company that installed the gym floor, Totuga Valley, installed the gym floor at Quimcat, installed the gym floor at Michigan, they, they have a list this long of universities and pro courts that they've installed. It, it, it is a nice floor, the floor came out beautiful, but you want, you wanna maintain it, you know, maintain the environment. Plus, that's the last piece of the puzzle at Totuga Valley, the whole, we spent years trying to air condition that entire school, and that's the last piece of the puzzle. Plus, the heating system is not that great in there, so that's a combination, new updated heating system and cooling, that we're asking for.
How old's that heating system, John?
Because both projects have to get done.
Right.
I know that.
Right, it's just.
You know, it's hard to find the money, but Totuga Valley, if you, when it comes to paving, if you're gonna put it out three years, you have to pave Totuga Valley first. Don't patch it, it's been patched a thousand times. Paved the entire, paved the entire site, and then we could do Jerome Harrison in stages. You could do the front and then do the back, if you wanna span it out three years. But Totuga needs to be done first.
Okay, thank you. Okay, fire department. Yep, so there's five hundred and fifty thousand in, for capital, in, under fund balance for fire equipment reserve. On there, and so. Who is going to talk about fire apparatus?
Chief Clangella will come up and talk about it.
So, there's five hundred and fifty thousand was the request from the department on here. Can you just review what that is?
Yeah, it's, there's three items. There's payment number three out of four for an ambulance, which is eighty thousand, two sixty-five. There's payment number three of five for the replacement of tower one, that's two hundred and twenty thousand. And then there's payment number one of four proposed for the new engine one at two hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, so three hundred thousand we have to do for the ambulance and tower one?
Correct, you're locked into those, correct.
Okay. And, so then the other two hundred and fifty thousand is for engine one?
Correct.
On there? Okay, so, based on previous information that we received, a, a new engine is two to four years out?
At least, at least two years, some manufacturers go up to four years.
Okay, and, so, so, do we have to make payments on the truck while we're waiting for it?
When we have delivery.
Is there any down payment that is required?
There are prepayment discounts, but I don't think, talking to.
Yeah, I, I emailed the salesperson today to confirm, Chief Clangella had talked to Mike Pinto, is the gentleman's name, and he said that that's correct. You can order today and have no financial commitment until the truck physically delivers to you. There are prepayment options, if you'd like, basically, you can put down nine fifty to give you a ten percent credit of ninety-five hundred dollars. If you put down four seventy-five, they'll give you a seventy-five hundred dollar credit. But there is no requirement to financially commit, except putting a purchase order in. The key is to lock the price into it, that, that's the whole purpose of, as Chief can talk you about, the, the price have escalated. We were talking before, the engine three that we bought just a few years ago, the naked truck itself was six hundred and sixty thousand, and now you're talking, you know, the neighborhood of nine fifty to probably close to a million dollars, just for the truck itself. As, as the escalation occurs of prices. So, I think this email really kinda cements the fact that we're just locking in the deal, getting a price together. Chief can draw up some, draw up some specs and talk to the, the company involved, and we'll lock in the deal, but as far as the financing piece of it goes, they don't want a dime until the truck gets delivered.
What we are gonna have at that time period, if we, if we say yes to this, we're gonna know if it's two or four years, or is it?
Oh, we'll know.
So, we hear the contract.
If we sign a contract, there will be projected delivery date.
So, what, if we look to do this, and we're not gonna, maybe we can forego this cycle of paving, but then put in, as if we're paying in a sinking account, in the next two to three cycles, and then we'll have at least something to put towards it in the months.
Do we have something coming off lease next year, Anthony?
Um, the ambulance finishes in twenty-six, twenty-seven, so you'll have eighty freed up at that point, and then the tower comes off in twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Like you said, to be locked into a good price point, and get in, get in, get in that apparatus to queue, and get that thing delivered, hopefully in about two years. Get defer those payments out, save some, a lot of money if price increases.
Do you think that, do you think we would have it for twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
I, I would hope so, I mean.
Yeah, you wouldn't know until it confirmed.
It's, there's so many moving parts with it, every major is different, but they're looking between two to four years, depending.
I'm just thinking if we put, if we push off the first payment until twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it washes with the, with the tower.
So, the whole idea is just to get in the contract, lock the purchase order, it locks in the price, no matter what. Right down payment.
Right down payment. Like I said, there are prepayment discounts, but.
There are nothing.
It's not like it used to be, but it's put it that way.
It's not an incentive.
We just wanna get, we wanna lock it in, we wanna lock it in.
Because if you're looking at three to six percent probably, next two years, you know, every year, for the next two years, so if you can forego that, get ourselves into.
I think if we lock, I think if we do anything, we lock in now, and we wait until twenty-seven, twenty-eight for first payment.
Well, we have to see once when it, we're hoping that it delivers in twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Well, even if it doesn't, even if it comes a year later.
Yeah, but if it comes earlier, then we have to pay.
Yeah, I don't know that that's gonna happen.
I would say the earliest would be two years.
All right, so earliest is two years, I still think that we allocate something small, even if it's fifty grand, and put it into a sinking account, it's gonna, it won't hit us hard, and we'll have that much less of a payment come twenty-seven, twenty-eight. It just, it's, it's a good practice to start, so that we're not hitting big bills.
Well, well, this is, this is also our fund balance, so this is not affecting.
Doesn't affect the mill.
The mill rate on there. So, we can take money from, so they, out of the five fifty, they really only need three hundred thousand to make the lease payments that we have.
Correct, yep.
We could, you know, do three fifty, and you'd still have two hundred thousand left.
Correct.
And we have approximately a hundred thousand dollars left from Franny's, so we can look at that and allocate some of that money to go into the sinking fund. And then we can look at some other projects that we didn't do, that we may need to do on here to, to see once, or use that fund balance in some other way, or keep it in fund balance. So, my question is, what, what is our fund balance after?
That is a dandy question.
And, and what percent are we, because I know we have to keep a percentage.
We were at fourteen point nine nine at the end of twenty-three, again, we're working with the auditors, as everybody knows, to try to wrap up twenty-four, to get a firm number, which then ties into Scott as well. But I, based on the numbers that I ran for the, on a budgetary basis, it's gonna be another, another year in the black, another positive year. So, I think we, we put the one point ninety-eight here, and then seven fifty towards the budget. I wouldn't go much more than that, to be honest with you, without having firm numbers, because we, again, we have the seven fifty allocated towards the mill rate, and then the million ninety-eight here.
Well, what I'm looking for is to put more than seven fifty to the mill rate, that's why I'm asking the question. I know seven fifty's in the budget towards the mill rate, but if we can use.
Could you, could you put it here and take money out of the budgetary columns? I don't wanna have a eight hundred thousand dollar hole the same next year. It has the same net impact, if, if you take the money out of the budgetary column, and put them in the fund balance column, so it's a non-recurring kinda situation? It, it does your same impact about getting lower mill rate.
Well, we could, but, but the problem is, we, we worked really hard to get budget funds in capital a number of years ago to equal one mil, so we were in the one point two range.
I know.
And then we came down into the three, four hundred thousand dollar range, so now we're trying to build it back up slowly.
No, I agree with you.
And, so, I would prefer not to, but if we have to, I understand that. But we, we need to get back to not only having a capital reserve for equipment, but we also need to work into the budget, getting some money that's there, that we know every year for capital.
Right.
We have money in the budget, so that we, so that's.
I agree with you, it's, you're, you're right.
So, we're trying to build that up, so I would prefer not to take it out of there. But I also wanna take more of the fun, if we have room in the fund balance, to up that seven fifty, because that will have a direct impact on the mill rate.
I'll reach out to Andrew tomorrow, see where he is, I'm trying to get some firm numbers for us.
Okay, all right, so, so the other, the other things in capital from the fire department, besides the, the capital, the equipment reserve. The extracation tools, I know you asked for two jaws of life, and so right now, it's currently one in the, to, to do one. Replacing the Lucas, great demonstration, by the way, so, so that's in here. There's thirty-five thousand dollars towards firefighting gear, and there's fifteen thousand dollars towards fire marshal vehicles. Is that a new vehicle?
That's a replacement.
Can we manage another year without getting that?
We, we have, we have some other funding pots that we're looking at possibly to acquire a new vehicle, a different vehicle for the fire marshal. We have, when we sold tower one, we had fifty-five hundred dollars from that, there was insurance claim, proceeds from another situation. So, couple those together, I think we should probably, we'd be able to get something for the marshal that would satisfy, and not make him on the most wanted list, and get him on, we can probably get rid of that.
Anthony, is there any insurance money coming back from the marshal vehicle that was moved by someone else for a time period?
Uh, I don't believe we've gotten that far, I don't think there's much damage, that was below our deductible, it's like, so it's not gonna be.
What's, what's wrong with the car?
Come to, come to find out.
Bruce ticket for a ride.
Come to find out that the Crown Victoria has basically a universal key.
It didn't take long.
And the universal key got into the hands of a, the wrong person, put it that way. And a week or so ago, out of his driveway in town, the marshal's car was taken. And went joyriding up to Tallinn and was recovered in East Windsor, where they, they did smash some of the radio equipment inside, the old radio, fortunately, our Kenwood radio. They did do some damage to the inside, but again, if you saw that car from the beginning, it wasn't much to be done, to be. it wasn't much to be looking at, as it was just holes in the exterior from rust and everything else. It serves the purpose after his accident to have something for him to do, his duties in. Again, could we find something else with those two pots of money, probably close to, I would say probably close to ten thousand dollars we have between those two pots, not using any of these money? We could probably find something reasonable.
Do you want anything in the town for a hand-me-down type thing?
Well, the problem, I think Jimmy.
Police cars, right?
Well, Franny, I think wants to say something.
Fire marshal car has been taken out of service. It's replaced today. It will not be going back on the road. It's a disgrace. And anything that we're getting back from the police department, I got to be honest with you, you guys are putting good money into not a good vehicle. And we got to stop it. All these town cars, I'm telling you, it comes out of my budget to keep them going, and they're not worth it. Not, I'm telling you, it's good for a spare car or whatever, but to have people on the roads with them, not good.
So Franny, you're saying all the town cars, we basically shouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, they're all hand-me-downs. And, you know, once the police department gets away, we may get one or two decent ones to use as maybe a backup down here. The town, I said this for ten years, the town hall should get one new car so that they can go to Hartford with pride and hope that, you know, they're going to come back. But, you know, seriously, before we had the town hall had a car, you know, they used to use that, and that used to come down. But now, you know, the car, they got a lot of hours on them, and we get very few cars that are in really good shape, right?
Is there any sale outside?
Every car that comes in, we have.
Can they be sold to the public?
Sell them off, sell them off. The profits, get money, they're just going to be used for a spare Hartford.
Hey, Bruce, excuse me.
And, you know, so that's the story.
We appreciate the input. We don't know this unless we are told.
Give the fire problem a cut-off.
Yeah.
So.
So I think the bottom line is, we probably have two pots we could put together to get something decent. If you want to get rid of that, then the commissioners here, they can opine on it. But I think there's a way around it, we have to.
So what's another option?
Personal vehicle.
Yeah, driving his truck.
That's not purchased.
Yeah. You don't want him showing up at an inspection or something in his personal vehicle. You want something.
Spare engine. Do we have, Chief, a question for you. You have, you're working with Durangos now, right?
Yep.
And obviously, you don't need a Durango setup like a police car, that has a lot of other things, but is there some, again, a lot of economies of scale, is there an intermediary that we could talk to that maybe those type of vehicles can be purchased at a lesser expensive patch?
Yeah, I can go up with our vendors on state contract, and they can go through the list of items that would work for them.
I think that might be a.
They're like forty odd thousand.
Are they that much?
Oh, yeah. Guys, they did this proposal that for the fire.
Scrap that idea.
Too.
Well, that's equipped as a police car.
I think what we need is a plan.
There's an ad to outfit it as a police.
Presented to us.
Oh, well.
That's what we need.
We'll try it.
You mean for other town vehicles?
Yeah, for what we were just talking about, about the town hall vehicle and town.
Town keys, yeah.
That needs, a plan needs to come from Mike, and they should be marked with the town seal on them.
Yes.
I mean, there should be, I don't know why we have unmarked cars, but we shouldn't have unmarked cars.
All verbal.
Okay.
In all fairness, that Crown Victoria was Dr. Troy.
It was.
It was purpose and.
Okay. So you're, we should keep the fifteen thousand in, or you're going to get back to us by the next meeting as?
I will get back to you, and I will work with the marshal to see if we can find something on there using the state site. The state has an interior site that towns have access to. We've had good luck, and Fran mentioned one of the vehicles that he bought recently. We bought Public Works vehicles, we bought town vehicles. I'll work with the marshal and see what's out there.
Okay. Okay. Do you have any?
Any questions about the new engine, primarily why I'm here, also work with Laura here. Any other questions for us?
No, it's, I mean, the big question was, how far out? Do we need deposits? Are there any discount, you know, that type of thing, what our plans are, and?
I was less than impressed with the prepayment discount. That's not what we've had in the past with other manufacturers.
Right.
Things have changed, and, you know, bill times and lead time, and supply chain issues.
I forwarded that email out to all you that I got from the.
It's a game changer. I never thought a million years, I'm asking for almost a million dollars for an engine.
Okay.
I may mention this privately to you, but is it possible, I mean, you may say notice this, but is it possible to revert, I mean, intermediary who's clearly getting some aspects of payment on it, and going directly to E1, or going directly to peers, or, you know, having some other options there for some discount?
I don't think they'll ever do that.
No departments do that? They don't go direct to manufacturer?
Are they consortiums, or maybe tag orders by other departments? Or they'll make it a discount for, you know, ordering multiple apparatus for the same manufacturer, which happens in the larger cities, larger departments, will replace two or three apparatus in one time. There's also discounts with that, but.
Sure.
Every manufacturer has different rules in prepayment discounts. I was less than impressed with what I heard today with that. I think locking into the good price point, and defer those payments out, getting in queue to get that apparatus replaced. I appreciate your question. Is there any more to know?
All right. Thank you. I have one other for, not for you, called, is Carrie Hanks here from Park and Rec. Okay, so in your presentation to us, you had talked about, I know, I see you've taken off the resurfacing of the courts at Northford Park.
Correct.
But your other big one was replacing one of the vans for the seniors, because it doesn't have air conditioning. We're using it now, but, you know, we'll be down to two vans, and with all of the increase between the shopping and the trips and the medical appointments and everything else, you need another van on there. And so is there?
I had just mentioned to Bruce, I had worked with DT the other day, and on that state site, there's a state van, a two thousand and fifteen Chrysler Town and Country, awesome condition, it has like eleven thousand miles, it has the original tires on it still. So the way the system works is I have to notify the keeper at the state that we're interested in the vehicle. They then will come back with a price, and we have like a week or ten days to proceed or not proceed with it. So I'm waiting, I mean, we're in the stage now of, if they come back with a decent price, and we think that it's something we want to do with, we'll send Barry up to Hartford to the site to examine it, test it out, make sure that it's cool, and then we'll come back to Mike and you guys and say, it'd be contingency transfer, I guess, at that point. So that's, I'm just waiting for the girl from the state to give me a price.
Oh, so you don't have a price?
I don't have a price, yeah, no. But it's an awesome, it's got a little ding in the back, there's nothing wrong with it. Everything, it's, the interior pictures, everything is perfect. And one of the comments that I think that Sarah had made, as they bring patients to, like, say, Smilow Cancer Center, they can't bring the vans in the loop, drop them off at the curb, because they can't bring the vans to drop people off properly. So why would you bring an old person and drop them off at the curb to have to walk inside, where you could bring a van into the loop, makes it more manageable and more appropriate? So a smaller vehicle, you know, hopefully a little more economy than the vans. It's great for the onesie-twosie kind of thing. So I'm hoping that it pans out, and I'll let Mike know as soon as we have a firm number from the state.
How many passengers does that?
It's a Town and Country, it's got two, and then two in the, probably four, maybe five, five, probably six passenger with the driver. It's got the double seat, and then the seats on that actually go into the floor, the stowaway seats. So if you needed it for trucking stuff around, you can use it for that purpose as well.
So just to clarify, what we're talking about are two separate vehicles?
I was going to say, that doesn't sound like what you needed.
It is what we need, and what we need.
Okay.
So the capital proposal was for a sixteen passenger vehicle. So we have a fleet of four vehicles right now. We have two eights, a thirteen, and a twenty-four. One of our eights is going to be taken out of commission, and then our twenty-four is in pretty rough shape. It also, it served us well. That was a vehicle that we did buy with Anthony through the website, and it served us well for while we had it. But it's a little bit too big for some of the day-to-day stuff. It does serve us well for the larger trips. So with losing an eight and a twenty-four, it's going to just give us the two, which is an eight and a thirteen. We'd like to, our capital request was for the sixteen passenger, so we have that larger capacity vehicle for the day trips, for the larger events that we do, and eventually we would like to add a minivan, so we can do those curb-to-curb medicals.
Which is what Anthony's.
Which is what Anthony's talking about. So I'm definitely in favor of that, like, exploring that, as well as.
Getting a sixteen?
Yes.
Passenger?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have an estimated cost?
I do.
Okay.
It was attached to our original capital request. The estimated cost, and this is a quote from a month ago, so it was for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for a sixteen passenger through Matthews Bus Company. They are the hub for these vehicles in Connecticut.
Okay. So.
I did compare, we've talked, we've also done the grant vehicles. Just so you know, the grant vehicle, the last one that we got was, is a grant vehicle, and it did take us from application to receiving the vehicle nearly three years. So the turnaround time on that is just a little lengthy in comparison to a ninety-day turnaround through Matthews Bus Company.
Okay. So it's roughly a hundred and twenty thousand if we buy it outright, so if we use some of the fund balance from Public Works Fire Department, we could buy it outright, or we could do, we could divide up the payments and do it over two or three years. So that's a.
If you have the cash, I'd just buy it.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty, she said.
But that's one of those things that you could use.
Karen, how many times a year do you use that large?
The twenty-four passenger? We actually used to use it a lot more often for our after-school program. We were using it weekly at least. Now we're using it monthly for our Mohegan Sun trips. But that twenty-four passenger, when it's great for, I mean, it served us well, for sure. We actually realized in using it is that it's a little bit too big, especially for the roads and driveways that are around town, so we can't use it for like a regular transportation run. It's just, it's too big. There's just not enough room in most of our neighborhoods to navigate it.
So sixteen, that's why you want?
Yeah, that's actually what we had. We had two sixteens years ago, and they served us very well, but they just aged out. And then we went a little smaller and a little larger, and just through trial and error and driving the buses, that seems to be a good large capacity size for our program needs.
Okay. All right. So that gives us more thought to think about for the.
I'm just thinking, if the larger ones don't get used that much, are you better off just buying another small one, and then even if you're going on those longer trips, just taking two vehicles rather than one big one?
We could take two vehicles, and that's what we've been doing, that, because the twenty-four passenger was out of commission for a little bit. And for the larger trips, we did, but when we do, when we take those two buses right now for the larger trips, then we can't do medical transportation that day, and it impedes upon our daily transportation, because there are seniors that come in Monday through Friday just to the senior center to have lunch and socialize. So we have to give something else up in order to take that second vehicle.
Yeah, I was, the only concern I had was, get a lot of drivers available.
Well, that's true, too. We have two very part-time drivers. So then when we have those additional vehicles, our senior center staff drive, but, I mean, there's been times as assistant director, when I was in that role, I was doing medicals, because we just didn't have the drivers, so.
So the sixteen is what?
It really would be ideal. It would be ideal to have a fleet of four with a sixteen, a thirteen, and eight, and a minivan for safety.
And then the other question is too, we were just talking, is if you're only going out once a month, is it feasible to just rent, you know, rent a van?
A contract out.
Or a contract out with, like a bus company or something like that?
That's a great question, and we've contracted out for some, not recently, but in previous years, we've contracted out to Lake Daco for, you know, theater trips and activities such as that. But the cost of chartering a bus like that through Daco, that cost filters down to our seniors, and it just doesn't make those activities and day trips affordable for them. If we had a sixteen passenger, we would certainly use that more than the twenty-four, because we could use it around town.
How does that filter down to the seniors? I didn't think about it.
The cost of the bus?
Yeah.
Well, because we have to pay for chartering a bus, and out of the senior center, I mean, the senior center account is a revolving account, so seniors pay for, you know, theater tickets or extra transportation, so.
So they pay for, on those.
So you put that in the cost.
The trips they pay. There's a fee involved. So if you're chartering a bus, the fee would be higher.
There's not, there's not a fee if we take them to the Speed Opera House. But if you charter a bus, then that cost has to go somewhere.
Well, couldn't you, well, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, no, please ask.
Couldn't you rent a, rent a bus, rent a van, rent a whatever?
Sure, but we still have to, I mean, where could we pay for it, like, out of?
Well, I'm not sure. There must be a creative way. The only reason why I'm asking is by using it once a month, to spend whatever to buy the bus and own the bus, maintain the bus, and so forth.
But they wouldn't use it once a month.
We would use a sixteen passenger more than once a month. The twenty-four passenger limits us to the day, to the day-to-day and around town. We could navigate a sixteen passenger much easier than we could a twenty-four in the driveways in Northford.
So what are you doing currently, without the sixteen passenger?
So if we're, if we're over thirteen passengers for a trip, let's say to Mohegan Sun, we do monthly, we have to use two buses. We have to, well, our thirteen is actually not working right now, so we would have to use two eights if we didn't have the twenty-four.
But then that takes out from medical.
Medical transportation and daily transportation.
It limits them on the other transportation. Something has to give in regards to it. So.
And that also takes two staff out of the building as well.
So.
And because our driver hours are limited, we take a regular daytime staff and a driver, so. Yeah, it's, we're just, we're borrowing for one to get together.
I don't understand why. Don't retire.
If you do, I'll drive you home.
There won't be room on the bus for me.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any other questions on capital? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And. Okay, so that handles questions for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Now we are on public comments. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and there is a three-minute limit, if anyone has any comments.
Hi, my name's Amy Conroy, sixty-seven Caputo Road, right here in North Branford. Mayor Angeloni, your tone and accusations specific to the Board of Education with the intent of paperwork and the tone in how you spoke to them, it actually leaves a deeply unsettling, unprofessional impression, and also undermines the hard work and the transparency and dedication of a. of a board educators and administrators that are consistently acting in the best interests of our students, staff, and community. Such a measured tone implies bad faith, blame, and honestly, it's just disrespectful. You also talk over some of your own town council members. And as somebody who's worked in corporate for a long time, it's just disappointing. I'm asking that you please focus on solutions and maintain the mission of the best interest and treat all of our departments in the same tone and the opportunity. That being said, our education is a foundation of our strong community, and if we're not investing in them, we're actually deterring our long-term success. The technology, curriculum updates, and facility improvements are dependent on the funding that we need. You wouldn't use a five-year-old cellphone. You wouldn't be using a computer that's five years old. You wouldn't be using gym equipment or paying a rental fee for a gym that's 25 years old. So it just, it just makes sense. The other side of it is our future workforce is in our classrooms right now. High-quality education prepares students for jobs in tomorrow. It prevents future costs on social services, unemployment, and corrections. Deferring the cost for repairs ultimately costs us more in the long run as the cost of materials and services increase. Cutting corners today costs us more tomorrow. The reduction of investments will ultimately directly impact our other revenues. The budget already recognizes how we get revenue from building permits, inspections, recording, filing fees. If we do not have a strong education system, people aren't gonna move here, and that's gonna drop the revenue that we very much need in our town. That being said, please consider supporting our education and our emergency services. Those are important values, and if we don't, it's going to cost us deeply in the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Judy Bannon, 28 Forest U Road. As you all know, I'm a board member, but I need to make clear I'm speaking for myself and not for the board. I was curious to know the non-lapsing facilities management account that is going to be established, if it would include the Board of Ed buildings. Certainly, they don't do the maintenance on the buildings, but they do take care of the grounds, so they maintain the grounds of the buildings. So I'm just curious if that would be included. I would like to talk about the 2% fund. Last year, the Board of Ed was told that the electrical credits were to be put into that fund to use for this year's bills. I would like to remind you that the 2% fund belongs to the Board of Ed and is used at their discretion. It is our only contingency fund, whereas you have money that you can go back to. That's all that we have, so, excuse me, I've been freezing for three hours. I'm shaking a little. So I would say that if and when we get that money for this year, I would ask you to not consider that when you decide whether we'll receive money going forward for next year. They're two separate things, and please don't think that you can put money here and take it from there. For the people at home, I hope not for you. I would like to just state that every year, the town receives money from the Connecticut, the state of Connecticut, to be used towards the Board of Education budget. It basically subsidizes our budget. This year, you're going to receive just over $7 million to be used for the Board of Education budget. Since 2000, you've received more than $180 million that was used toward the education budget. So I think it's only fair to remember that when you look at our budget, $7 million of that is already paid for. And finally, interestingly, I've watched all the meetings so far, and all the other departments have been treated with a great deal of respect. There's been laughter, there's been encouragement. Some have even been told if their budgets were cut too much, they could come back and ask for more. The disrespect, the rudeness, the side comments, and the jokes that have been directed towards the Board of Education is not behavior that I would expect to see from our elected officials. And I sincerely hope that we can move forward in a more positive manner to improve the relationship between the two. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. It's time, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion has been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.